Five seconds, your mic will hop. You're live.
Good evening. Welcome to the September 29th, 2025 meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Auburn. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Select Board is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapters 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, 1-408-650-3123 and access code 235-235-861. Or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone else recording the meeting? Okay. Now, please stand if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I ask that we have a moment of silence, please, for Carl Westerman, who recently passed away. He was a town meeting member, Constable Veterans Advisory Committee member. He was on the Board of Selectmen School Building Committee. He was a patrolman with the Police Department. He was on the Facilities Reuse Committee, the Charter Review Committee, and the Youth Commission. So let's have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. First item on our agenda tonight, public comments. No one signed, no, okay, no one signed up. So now we're going to look at presentations and public hearings. We have a presentation about the Pappas Park Volleyball Court, the Eagle Scout Project from Brandon Tarian with potential vote. So why don't you come on up? You can sit, go to the podium if you'd like, or you can come sit in one of the chairs. Just identify yourself, please.
Hello, my name is Brandon Tarian. I'm currently a Life Scout for Troop 53 of Auburn. And for my Eagle Scout project, I would like to build a volleyball court as Pappas Park Recreational Center. At Pappas Park Recreation Center, I would like to build a volleyball court for the town. A couple of reasons why I would like to build this court is because this will not only help me, but it'll also benefit the town people in another fun sport to play. The four steps. In step one, I'll be painting measurements on the ground, which is a 30 by 60 foot court. In step two, little diggers will help me remove six inches of topsoil, and they will also be taking the topsoil away. In step three, I will lay down the weed block and put sand over the weed block to make sure that weeds will not grow through the sand. In step four, I will put in the poles as well as cementing them in and putting the net and pads up. Estimated time of work. Step one will take one day, about four hours. Step two will take two days, four hours each day. Step three will also take two days, four hours each day. And step four will take one day, two hours. Total estimated hours is 22 hours and five to 10 volunteers each day. Some concerns you might have. Insurance. The Boy Scout troop does have insurance for all scouts in the troop. Sand spreading onto the grass. I will make sure the sand does not spread onto the grass by having a stable foundation and also good edging. Will this cement harm the grass and surrounding soil? No, the cement will not harm the grass or surrounding soil. It will just hold the poles in place. Injuries. It is my intention to put pads around the wooden poles to prevent as much injuries as I can. Adjustment to the nets. The nets will not have a mechanism to adjust, but will be attached to eye hooks that you can untie and readjust. Thank you for listening to my presentation. Is there any questions you have?
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions?
Madam Chair, thank you for the presentation and thank you for taking on this project. I just have actually a couple of questions probably for our staff with respect to, I know Miss Pappas isn't here, but Superintendent Fairbanks, if I can ask you, have you worked with the Boy Scouts on this plan? And is this something that we have the capability to maintain over time?
Yeah, I've worked with, me and Brandon met up there. And it's a perfect area for it. It's got plenty of space. And we don't have volleyball courts in town. And we talked to Kristen Pappas about having, you know, a recreation volleyball league. And I don't think there's going to be a problem with the sand getting on the grass. If you look at any softball field, baseball field, there's stone dust on the infield. We do have a machine that can brush the grass and put the sand back in the spot that it needs to be. If, I don't see that being a problem unless, you know, kids are up there just kicking the sand onto the grass, but I think it's going to be okay. I think it's a good project for the community.
Thank you very much. I don't have any other questions.
Okay. My only question would be, does the net get brought in in the wintertime?
It can be, but it is used as a sports net, so you don't have to take it down. But I would advise to take it down to make sure it can last as long as possible.
And when is the project, when are you planning to start the project?
Next spring.
Next, what?
Spring.
In the spring? Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? No?
So Madam Chair, if no one has any more questions, I'll make a motion to support the Pappas Park Volleyball Court Eagle Scout Project as presented by Brandon Tarian.
Tarian.
Tarian, perfect, thank you. Of scouting American Troop 53.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. You're all set, thank you very much.
I need someone to sign my papers for the scouting board so I can send them in.
Okay.
The town manager will do it.
Yeah, she'll sign those. All right. Next we'll hear from Adam Menard, if you want to come on up, Adam. So we have, there's some articles, on the warrant articles that are coming up on the special town meeting. And do you want to tell us about them?
Sure. There's three zoning articles proposed for a town meeting. The first one has to do with the MBTA Community Bylaw. Met with the state over the summer. There are still a few items that they would like to see the town change. Want to, it was Article 8 is the, Article 8. Basically, they don't want any special permits surrounding apartments because they're discretionary and could theoretically kill an apartment, apartment building being constructed in the RA District. So if an apartment building were to be proposed, it wouldn't need to get a special permit if this passes for a floodplain district or an aquifer district and a couple of other areas. But they'd still need to comply with the bylaw. So that, that's the difference is removing that permitting.
Is that just about Article 8?
Yes.
No, no questions, okay. Please continue.
Article 9. The idea of some of these changes was to reduce some of the regulatory burden and certain items called out in the zoning bylaw for varied accessory uses. The first one, earth removal, that was actually removed from the zoning bylaw a few years ago. It resides in the general bylaw, so that's more language cleanup. The other items, there was to reduce some of the regulatory burden. For example, you have, want to have an electric vehicle charger as an accessory use, you need to get a special permit. That seems a little burdensome with the shift to electric vehicles. Same with the farmer's market, requiring a special permit to get a, to open a farmer's market. In my opinion, that's something that we want to see encouraged.
Yep.
Removing that expense, that does take some time to go through the special permit process. It's just try to reduce some of the burden to try to help attract some of these uses you want to see in town.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about these articles? All right. And that was Article 9, right?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's it. And you'll be at the special town meeting, so if the public has any questions.
Madam Chair, it's Article 16 as well.
Oh, 16 too, okay.
16 is the proposed traffic study bylaw.
The traffic study bylaw. Well, do we want to wait till we get to that section?
What's included here on, on issue 7A, it's Town Planner Letter dated September 23rd, 25.
All right. All right.
I know that a problem in all items, it says zoning bylaw review committee. They looked at Articles 8, 9, 16, last week or the week before. And I gave you their recommendations for those zoning articles. They recommended approval for 8 and 9, and they wanted to delay Article 16, take some more time to study that. They want EDU from DPW and the police chief. For the Planning Board, they, the recommendations last week on Article 8 and 9, they recommended approval of both of those. The traffic study bylaw will be at the October 14th meeting of the public hearing for that. They will have yet to take a stance, but I'll send you a memo once they do.
Madam Chair, if I may ask a question about the Article 16. So this is about the traffic study bylaw. It was brought forth for the May Town Meeting by Zoning Board of Appeals Chair Bob Tetro. At that time, myself, Mr. Carpenter and others identified what I would call fatal flaws. Basically, the, the, the proposed warrant article that he put forward was a copy paste of what Walth, I believe was the town or city of Waltham had for their traffic study. And there were certain references in there to city instead of town that weren't changed. There was some wording in there regarding geographic area relating to the metro Boston area instead of our area. And for that reason, town meeting, upon our recommendation and others' recommendation, didn't put it forward. And I think at that time, we brought it, Ms. Carpenter brought it back to this board in June because our intent was to support something like that. And we wanted to see that move forward. And we took a vote in June to send it to the zoning bylaw review committee at that point with the hopes that they were going to do their work over the summer. They were going to meet, deliberate, discuss it with staff, and it would be ready to come back for fall town meeting. That way, there was not a large delay in that process. For whatever reason, that was never done. It came back to us in the beginning of September, asking us for a second vote to send it to the zoning bylaw review committee with the exact same issues not changed, not identified. We voted at that time a second time to send it to zoning bylaw review committee. And then it finally got, made its way there with the changes that we, that we provided. At this point, I have a deep respect for the zoning bylaw review committee. I think just like my fellow members do, and that's why we wanted them to get this in advance so that they could meet and review this in time for the fall town meeting. I'd like to know where the disconnect was because now, as it is, since they have not been able to do their due diligence, and I respect their opinion, I'm not going to support it at town meeting, even though I think we need to put this forward. So this is now going to carry on to May. So it's going to be one year when we know we have large progress coming up. It was identified as a issue with our zoning bylaws through the last Perry Place review where the engineer came in and told the ZBA, well, you don't have a traffic study bylaw, so we can give you whatever we want. And there's no recourse for you, essentially. And that's why Mr. Tetro brought it forward at that time. So I'd like to know why or where the disconnect was, where we asked specifically for it to go to the zoning bylaw review committee so that that work can be done. And now we're getting delays. And if another project comes in, we still have the issue with our zoning bylaws that we had that triggered this in the beginning.
Yeah, sure, thank you.
Through the chair. You're absolutely right. We dropped the ball on this one. It was voted in June to go to the zoning bylaw review committee. And for some reason, it wasn't communicated to the appropriate people. Systems have been put in place to ensure that whatever happens at these meetings are conveyed to all employees. And also what's happening at some of the other pertinent meetings that encompass development like planning and the zoning bylaw review committee and also the ZBA. Because there is a clear disconnect, and I'm going to take responsibility for this. I'm the town manager. But I see it across multiple areas in town. So I can tell you I am addressing it. And we hope to not have that happen again.
Through the chair.
Yep.
So if we recommended this and it got approved, we could always go back and edit like we do all the other bylaws, correct? What is, what is the consequence of not letting this go through and supporting it at this point? Like, is there a fatal flaw in this, or are we talking minor edits and corrections?
I'll defer to Dr. Menard, but I believe what's before us is the corrected version. It's just that the zoning bylaw review committee has not been able to do their work that they're tasked with.
So, so to me, it sounds like if there's issues with it, it could be corrected at a later date. But to delay this further would be foolish because we also have to wait, has to go to the Attorney General. We have a lot of bylaws that have needed correction over the years. So again, if there's no fatal flaw that has been shown, why wouldn't we support at this time? If I may through the chair, Dr. Menard, are there any fatal flaws in here?
I, I don't believe there are. There were a couple typos that were, were edited. The bylaw review committee did look at, spent about half their meeting a couple of weeks ago looking through this. They just weren't comfortable doing, giving it a full, you know, okay, until they had some more input. They did add a couple bullet points under required data. One of them had to do with noise. So they wanted just the noise that might be increasing. And one of them had to do with like the wear of the roads. So they wanted to see if they could call that out. They did make a couple of edits to the, to the proposed bylaw, but nothing, I think that will hurt the bylaw. It'll probably help with those additions.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
So is, is it, is there a potential for, again, because I want to respect their process and I want to respect the involvement of our staff, is there a potential for them to meet with, you know, DPW, police, fire, review this, clean it up, and have them vote it out before town meeting?
We can probably try to schedule the meeting. The trouble is it will be going to the printers before that would happen. Except I, I don't think it would hurt to consider advancing this, even though the bylaw review committee does want to get it deeper. Something on the books doesn't, doesn't hurt. It's been done in the past, in the recent past where a bylaw's been put forward and approved. But we found out a month later that we need to tweak something because it doesn't quite meet the standard or the AG wants something, you know, edited. So. And not, not to disrespect the advisory committee, and I'm not going to, but it is an advisory committee. The, the boards that do require to take a position are this board and planning board on these zoning articles per the AG's guidance on adopting bylaws.
And to address, this warrant is going to get printed, I think, next week. So we're not going to be able to, and that can't get delayed because it has to get printed, assembled, and mailed out. All right.
Through the chair, can I ask you a question? Has the planning board looked at this bylaws? If the select board and the planning board have the final say on it, have they reviewed it?
Planning Board, public hearing will be on the 14th, so in a couple of weeks. So yeah.
Would it be possible to, do you convene the zoning bylaw review committee before the planning board?
Yes, I can see if they can meet.
Thank you.
We can amend articles, and Mr. Chambers mentioned that. So while, I mean, I guess I've been doing this so long. We've had warrants with missing dollar amounts, you know, which to me is very serious because they only get seven or 14 days in which to actually review these. For this, does the zoning bylaw committee have serious reservations? Or was it just a timing situation, I guess?
I think they just want more input from various staff, including the DPW director and the police chief, just to tell they feel, see if there's something that they want to include or have any concerns with.
Obviously recommend at town meeting to, ask town meeting to pass it by if it's not ready. So that would be great. Thank you.
Any other questions? I think we're all set. Thank you, Dr. Menard. Okay. Continuing on our, on our agenda, solid waste and recycling. We have a yard waste collection flyer. Darling Coyle will come up and tell us about it. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So thank you so much. We have solid waste collection. So as you may know, as part of the municipal solid waste and recycling pickup, we offer two times a year, spring and fall, for yard waste collection right at curbside. This year, we, we have the four weeks. We're trying something a little bit different this year based on input from the residents in, in past years. So normally, we start the end of October for four weeks. So we go the end of October and we finish it right before Thanksgiving. We never do pick up the week of Thanksgiving just for, because people are going to spend time with families. So this year, we're starting it a week later. And so we're going the three weeks before Thanksgiving. And then we're doing, we skip Thanksgiving week. And then that week after, the first week in December, we'll have the fourth pickup. So obviously, you never know when the leaves are going to fall. So this is always kind of something where people do want it earlier. But we're trying to balance out really kind of catching that and before the snow flies. So hopefully, this works out. If we get a snowstorm in between there, it, we never know. We're in New England. But we'd like to try it this way. And that way, it gives people that, that one last chance before the, the holiday in December to kind of clean up their yard and get rid of the, the final brush and leaves. So we're excited to try something different based on the feedback from the residents. And we just wanted to highlight it here. It is on the website and it will be in the newsletter. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Yep.
Not a question, just a comment. Thank you for taking that, the resident feedback. I know that I was one of the ones that always looked at the date and it always made sense. Wish you had one more week.
Sure.
To, to, as the leaves started coming down in late November, because as we all know, the seasons have shifted. And thank you for putting out this in advance and with a lot of time. I know it's already been pushed around social media. My wife was very happy to see it, and she added my honey to-do list for the month of November. So just thank you for putting it out. And I would just ask that you continue circulating it similar to Halloween hours. This is, you know, a million and one questions come on social media. Like, when's the fall waste, yard waste collection? And, you know, the more the, the town pushes it out, the better. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we do have, like, when you leave tonight, we do have them near the, the doors, the sandwich board signs. We, we make this in a poster size.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, continuing, we will hear from our police chief, Scott Mills. Thank you.
I said I was going to make it up here in two strides, but I failed. Evening.
Good evening.
So I am here to speak about Halloween, one of everyone's favorites. Also based on some resident feedback, we decided to go with 5:30 to 8:00 on Halloween. It's a Friday night. We've had good results in the years past. We always put on a little extra, a few extra bodies and make sure that there's, you know, extra coverage. The motor unit gets out and drives around. That's always extremely popular with residents and the kids and all. And we provide them with enough candy to do what they have to do. So we're, I'm proposing 5:30 to 8:00, which is a half, bless you. It's a half hour longer than it was last year. So.
Okay, great. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief, for the extended hours. Do we have to vote on this? I know it says recommendation. I believe we have to vote.
No.
It's not a motion here, but I believe, I thought we did have to vote.
I, I make the recommendation, you actually vote to decide that's the hours.
So I'll make a mo-
My understanding is.
I'll make a motion to, to approve the recommendation for Halloween hours, October 31st, 2025, beginning at 5:30 PM and ending at 8:00 PM.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Oh, sir, question?
So what's not on the agenda is that.
Right.
So I feel like that.
Oh, no, it is. So.
It's a same vote, doesn't it?
Says letter dated with recommended trick-or-treating hours. So I'm not sure whether it's a lot of vote or not.
Yep.
Through the chair, that was, this was a question in the office as well. So we went back the last couple of years, and it was not an actual vote. It was just an informational communication so that the board knew. And there was, I remember the discussion in the past. So I think it's okay if we don't vote, but I agree, it's not on the agenda to vote.
Well, I would say I fully support it. I just want to make sure we're doing it right if they went back and checked.
My recollection is that it was a vote, because I know last year, the chief came in and recommended, I think, at 7:00, and we pushed it to 8:00 o'clock on him, and we voted.
I think 7:30, yeah.
Yeah, 7:30.
You did change it, yeah.
So we might just want to cover ourselves with a vote at some point at a future meeting.
Sure. Okay. Okay, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Okay. Now we're into Select Board General items. We're going to proclamations and recommendations, recognitions. We're going to vote on a request for proclamation to recognize J. Lawrence Ciccolo for 12 years of service on the Zoning Board of Appeals. So J. Lawrence Larry Ciccolo recently resigned from the ZBA, and this request is for proclamation for him to be drafted and signed and presented to him at the October 14th Select Board Meeting. Do we have any questions?
I, I would just say that I know that the Zoning Board of Appeals, their chair and their vice chair, were asked by their, their entire board to put this forward to honor Mr. Ciccolo and his 12 years of service on the ZBA. I don't believe he resigned. I believe he just did not accept reappointment. So he did finish his term. So I will make a motion to issue a proclamation to recognize J. Lawrence Ciccolo for 12 years of service on the Zoning Board of Appeals.
A second.
Oh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye. Opposed? Great. And now, we have a second possible vote on the request for proclamation to recognize Virginia Lehner for her 100th birthday. Virginia Lehner, who lives at Brookdale Eddie Pond, is turning 100 years old on October 22nd. This request is for a proclamation recognizing her in her 100th birthday. If she's able to attend the meeting on October 14th, the events coordinator would like the proclamation presented to her with her family and attendants. But if she's unable to travel, she would, they would greatly appreciate one of the select board members delivering it to her in person. That would be, I can certainly deliver that to her. Any questions? Okay.
I will, yep. I'll make a motion to issue a proclamation to recognize Virginia Lehner on her 100th birthday, October 22nd.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you. Now, we have no gift acceptances today, and now, we're going to look at the special town meeting warrant. We're going to review, discuss, and vote recommendations on October 28th, 2025, special town meeting warrant. And on the articles, we're either going to recommend approval, not recommend approval, defer to the petitioner, or take no position. Okay? So, let me just take a look. We don't usually make recommendations on Article 1. That's to hear the reports. Is that correct, Madam? Is that correct?
I believe you don't.
Yeah, okay. So, now, we're looking at Article 2, see if town meeting will vote to amend Article 3 of the May 6th, 2025 annual town meeting as follows. And further to approve an amended fiscal 2026 budget for the Town of Auburn at $82,875,031 or act on anything relative thereto. Ms., how about, Ms. Neuss, will you come up? And just remind everyone of your title. Thank you.
Thank you. Article 2 has some supplemental appropriations, and I will just go through the items on here so you have an idea of why the changes are being recommended. First is for the insurance and bonds from $990 to $1,095. That's a change of $105,000, and that's for the additional increase in rates and some values of the properties. Next item is Norfolk Agricultural Assessment from $96,500 to $1,578,38. That's an increase of $61,338. There are two additional students that are going to be attending the school for this school year. The treasurer collector's salary, an increase of $15,000 from $95,450 to $110,450. The treasurer, the former treasurer collector retired in the month of June, and we are, we need her assistance in order to close fiscal year '25 and to bring it forward. So, we are asking for some additional funds for that. The salary reserve from $480 to $530 is an addition of $50,000. The highway union has recently settled. GEU is still not settled, and we have been using the salary reserve for a couple of different, different things other than just the, the settling of the contracts. Like, for example, we had to hire an additional, well, we had a new assistant accountant, and she needed some additional help with the payroll. So, we're doing, so, so Gillian Taylor is helping her with that. So, just to make sure that we have enough funds available for everything that we need, we're asking for an additional amount in there. The police chief's salary line item and the police chief Quinn increases of $45,365 in the salary from $147,622 to $192,987, and the Quinn, an additional $8,251, and those are from the retirement of the police chief. We had to pay out any, the amount of time that was owed on that to the retired police chief. The next line items, the fire professional development, the fire physical fitness, and the firefighter salary are increases from the settlement of the union contract. And if there's any questions on those, could I have, Chief Coleman can address some of those. And if there's any questions, there was an increase in the professional development. The fire fit, physical fitness is new in the fire contract, similar to what's in the police contract. And the increase in the firefighter contract from three, or firefighter salary, I'm sorry, from 3.8 to 3.9, there is an additional amount going into there. And there were some different things that were settled in the contract, so I'd like to ask the chief if he could maybe give a little bit more detail on those lines, if you could.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Not sure if anybody had an opportunity to watch the finance committee meeting last Wednesday, but I, I gave them an update on this topic as well. I first want to start out by thanking the firefighter's union for what we consider to be a very successful contract negotiation. As the board has been told in the past, as well as conversations with the finance committee, town administration's top priority coming into this contract season as it was, you know, three years ago. So, it's been many years since we've been trying to accomplish a reduction in the paid time off for the firefighters. I've talked about it publicly in the past, you know, decades ago, as far back as 25 years ago, there were periods of time where, in lieu of equitable compensation, firefighters were given paid time off in lieu of raises. And, you know, at some point in time, that's going to catch up with you, and you're going to be put in a position where people have more paid time off than maybe even other employees because they took less raises over a period of time. And that was the case with the firefighters. In some cases, they had almost double, if not double, the amount of paid time off as other, not only Auburn town employees, but even their firefighter counterparts in other collective bargaining agreements. So, the union knew that this was our top priority coming into negotiations. They listened. They worked with the town, and they gave back more in this contract negotiation, negotiation than any other union. And now, they have parity with paid time off with all other Town of Auburn employees as well as their firefighting counterparts in other collective bargaining agreements. We knew coming in, although their contract is the same on a percentage basis as every other contract across the board, we knew that we were going to have to buy that time back, and that time came at a cost that was higher than what was in the salary reserve. But we made a commitment in the beginning, or I should say, I made a commitment to town administration, that we would take any offset above and beyond the salary reserve account from ambulance receipts in order to offset that. So, that's why when you look, you'll see that, that addition, that $200 some odd thousand, that's closing the gap between that and salary reserve. But like I said to the finance committee, you can't do your own math, looking at what that total is and trying to back into a percentage to figure out what the firefighters got for a contract because it will be wrong and it will be inflated. So, the firefighters received the same essentially nine and a quarter percent that every other bargaining unit did across, but in order to buy back that, that time back, it was going to cost more than what was in the salary reserve. So, we went into this contract negotiation, both the manager and I, she knew that this was my top priority because this affects other things that we've talked about a lot over the years, and overtime being one of them. And so, we, we knew that there was not going to be, again, sort of real money in order to pay that down, and so, we looked at this contract as a, this is a long-term strategy in terms of reducing that overall time off that will have a cost savings in the future as employees get more paid time off as they get seniority. So, again, I, I want to thank the firefighter's union for, for listening and, and meeting with us and being able to get this resolved. This is something that I've been trying to get resolved for close to eight years, and I'm glad we were able to do it.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone have questions?
I do have a question, not particular to that section of this, but as far as insurance and bonds go, like, is that on an annual basis, we go out for that, or is that multi-year contracts? And how do we try to lock in cost certainty if they're just changing valuations every year?
Through the chair, it's an annual cost and renewal. I will be going out to get bids by using prior year's claims. We do have several claims. I did question the increase when it happened, and it, we had an increase last year as well. So, I think it's very important for us to keep our eye on that, and much like we would do in our own personal home, if we had car insurance or house insurance, sometimes you have to go to other insurance providers. So, in this case, I'll be getting quotes for next year.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Dan?
I just have one on the Norfolk assessment. Does that include transportation, or is that separate? This is, is this just tuition, or is this tuition and transportation?
It's tuition and transportation.
If I can piggyback on that, are we, we used to work with another town, kind of, you know, both of us, I think it was Spencer. Do we do our own bus, or do we work with another town?
I'm not really sure on that one, but the transportation didn't change by adding the, the two students. It was just the tuition piece of it.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval for Warren Article 2.
We have a motion and a second to recommend approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Article 3 is to see if the town meeting will vote to amend Article 4 for the school department capital improvement budget for fiscal year 2022, approved at the May 4th, 2021 annual town meeting, to repurpose the original appropriation of $150,000 from the Swiss building rehab for air quality improvements to be used towards Swiss parking lot repair and improvements or act on anything relative thereto. Yep, okay. Do you want to tell us about it?
Sure. Unfortunately, Dr. Chamberlain was not able to make it tonight, but I did speak with her about this, and we've been actually working on it for several months. The Swanson Road Intermediate School has a drainage issue. If you go by in the parking lot, you'll see it's all cordoned off. It doesn't look as big as it is. It is unsteady, and there is some collapsing pipes and whatnot under, under the, the parking lot. I have submitted this to our insurance company to see if it's something that they will help us with, but because we cannot wait and we need to get this repaired, Dr. Chamberlain had recommended repurposing the money that she had appropriated in her CIP that was earmarked for the HVAC work that is now being done by Joe Fahey through ARPA and other things to handle this, this project. In addition to, let me, yeah, that's, so that's just this one.
So, may I ask that, so this HVAC work will get done because we're using the ARPA funds to, to complete that, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, great. Questions?
I just have a question on timing. I know that this is a critical issue, and I know that, I believe from watching the last school committee meeting, they're moving forward with taking care of this critical issue now in advance of town meeting. What's the implications if town meeting does not vote favorable action on this?
I am not honestly sure. I didn't know they were moving. I thought they were just doing the preliminary stages, so once approved, at the end of the month, they can finish the project.
That, that might be what they're doing, but they have the money to do the preliminary stages?
Yes.
Okay.
That was it, yeah.
Just want to make sure that, that we fix the problem as fast as possible, but we also don't put ourselves in a bind financially.
Correct.
Through the chair, do we know, I know Mr. Fahey was in not that long ago, and things were moving. Is that on track, and are we on budget there? And I'm, I'm just hesitant for the use, to switch the entire use on that if there was a shortfall in money on that project.
If I may, through the chair, I have spoken with Joe recently because there's been a lot of work in the front of town hall, so I wanted to see his timeline about the town hall HVAC system, which will be within the next month, and he's also finishing up at the school department. I don't believe there are any financial issues right now. He didn't bring anything to me, but I will schedule a meeting with him to see if there are any issues. I don't believe anything was brought, brought to Karen either. I'm pretty sure she would have told me, so at this point, no.
My next question is on timing. If this was approved in '22, are we just getting it now because we were waiting? Like, what, what's the delay in '22 approval, and we're in the end of '25 now?
For the HVAC?
For the work, yeah. I'm just wondering why it wasn't already done.
I believe it was caught up in the, there was a study that we did a couple, little over a year ago, and it tied in the school department as well as town buildings, and we had worked together to develop a plan. They had already appropriated these funds, knowing it would need to be done. So, I think it was just to be safe, knowing it would need to be done. When ARPA came out and we realized that we could get credits from some of the work that was being done, we're using both ARPA, some CIP, and credits to fund the projects.
Any other questions on Article 3? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval for Article 3.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to recommend approval for Article 3. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Let's look at Article 4. This is to see if the town meeting will vote to amend Article 4 of the school department capital improvement budget for fiscal year 2024, approved at the May 2nd, 2023 annual town meeting, to remove $25,000 from the original appropriation of $280,000 from the Auburn High School building rehab for parking lot resurfacing to Auburn High School roof drainage repair or act on anything relative thereto. Dory, will you tell us about this?
Yes, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yep.
When I spoke to Beth, the full amount, $200,000 was used for the parking lot and for the work that needed to be done, and there was a need due to a drainage issue in the entrance of the high school, that they were able to fix the roof of the overlay that goes in to the front doors, but there was a lot of damage on the posts coming down. And it's definitely in need of dire repair, and that's what this $25,000 is for. So, they don't need it for, it would have been something she would have repurposed or given back at some point anyway. It is going to, into the building rehab of those columns.
Thank you.
Through the chair, if I may.
Sure.
Did you say $200,000 had been spent?
Yes, I did.
So, so there's $80,000 remaining, and we're asking for 25 of that remaining?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to recommend approval for Warren Article 4.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to recommend approval for Warren Article 4. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. It's pa, it's recommended. Article 5, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $16,200 from ambulance reserve for appropriations for the purchase of cancer and heart screenings for members of the fire rescue department or act on anything relative thereto, submitted by Auburn Fire Chief. Good, good evening. So, I have a question. We're going to appropriate from the ambulance reserve for appropriations, and just looking at Article 7, that would come from the ambulance receipts. What's the difference between those two?
It's the same. It's, it's common language. It's either referred to as ambulance appropriations or ambulance receipts.
So, it's the same account?
It's the same account.
Okay, thank you. Questions on Article 5?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of Article 5.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second to approve Article 5. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's recommended. Article 6, to see if the town meeting will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law Chapter 32, Sections 4 to B, and Mass. General Law Chapter 32, Section 4 to B and a half, to allow permanent Chapter 32, Section 4, 2B and a half, to allow permanent intermittent or call firefighters to be credited with full-time service for the purpose of calculating retirement benefits in accordance with Chapter 32 of the Massachusetts General Laws, and any other applicable laws and collective bargaining agreements, or act on anything relative thereto. Chief, would you tell us about that one, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, successful passing of this Mass. General Law will correct an error, I apologize, that Wester County Retirement has been making for several years. And it's been recently come to light that this legislation is a remedy. The easiest way to explain this is if we had summer help that worked in our DPW that was mowing lawns or weed whacking, and we had the same individual come back three or four years, let's say they were going through college, and every summer they came and they worked for us. And then after college, they got a job with the Holden DPW. They would be allowed to credit the time that they worked here, part-time, in the town of Auburn, towards their retirement in the town of Holden. Call firefighters were not able to do the same because of how Wester County Retirement was reading that portion of the law. Essentially, they didn't realize that call firefighters were actually working firefighters. They thought that they were on like a reserve list somewhere, not kind of working. So this is something that the Fire Chiefs Association has been trying to remedy for many, many years. And then finally, this is the remedy. So if this passes, this will allow the town of Auburn to basically confirm that any member who served as a call firefighter for the town of Auburn, and then went off somewhere else, whether it's the city of Worcester, the town of Charlton, any other retirement board, it would allow them to use the part-time service that they had for us as a call firefighter to count towards their retirement. There is no financial obligation by the town because any credible service would be paid for by the employee. They would cut that check to the retirement board. And then in the future, when that employee retires, there would be no pension liability or obligation on behalf of the town of Auburn because they never served here as a full-time employee. So there is no pension obligation either. So essentially, this really allows call firefighters to be included with every other part-time employee that may work for the town that then goes on to work for another community to be able to count that credible service towards their retirement.
Thank you. So are other towns also in the same situation and having to pass this?
Yes. So Massachusetts Fire District Seven, which is what we're a part of, between May and the fall, I would say pretty much, close to 100% of the departments have gone to their town meetings and had this legislation passed by their town meetings.
And is that a mistake that was being made by retirement systems at other places in the state?
Largely just Wester County.
I beg your pardon?
Largely just Wester County.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions?
So, Madam Chair, I just want to confirm. So the employee will have to buy back their time, like any other DPW?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a quick question. So if a call firefighter was hired, when we went more professional, does their call service, you're explaining it as if somebody started here and then had to go somewhere else to get on a fire department. Do our existing, because many of the professionals were call firefighters before they became full-time firefighters, were they always able to count these?
No. So that was part of the, that was part of the issue with Wester County Retirement, is they would only allow call firefighters who became full-time in the same department that they served as a call firefighter. So we have full-time employees here in Auburn who served as call firefighters, and when they became full-time, they were allowed to buy back their credible service because they went full-time in the same department. Our issue for many, many years has been, that's not the rule. And again, using the DPW as an analogy, we say every other part-time employee is able to buy back their credible service regardless of where they go to work full-time, why are the firefighters different? And then ultimately, years of legal, you know, battles, and this is the remedy to that situation. So we not only have call firefighters who worked for us here that have become full-time firefighters in other communities, this is giving them the same ability that the call firefighters who served here, who became full-time in Auburn, received.
I just wanted to make sure that, as you explained it, I just wanted to make sure that people who stayed with the department still got the benefit of their years of service.
Yes, they did.
This is more on Article Five. If we could just ask town administration, if those ambulance receipts and reserves are the same, if we could just, when they get printed, have the same language, just to avoid any confusion.
The true name is the ambulance appropriations account. That's the true name.
However, it needs to be legitimately, just so that they agree. So town meeting won't have the same question from, and for record-keeping, it's just better.
Yep, understood.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval for Warren Article Six.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to recommend Article Six. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that's fine. And Article Seven, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $50,000 from ambulance receipts for personnel expenses and other related costs associated with active threat response training for police and fire, or act on anything relative thereto. And this is, this is an article from the Auburn Fire and Police Chiefs. Question? Well, do you want to tell us about it?
Sure, through the chair. Both police and fire, we have trained separately over the years under the new active threat procedure under the National Fire Protection Association. Both law enforcement and fire service have adopted NFPA as the official essential rule of active threat. And although the departments have all trained individually on that, we have not drilled as a department, as the two departments coming together for one large-scale drill. And in talking with Chief Mills, we both see a lot of benefit in that, especially where both departments have had a lot of new members over the last couple of years. So if town meeting approves this article, we would be planning a joint police and fire active threat training that would include 100% of the members from both departments. And Chief Mills is here to answer any questions that you may have on the active threat piece.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
So I'm supportive of this. I don't have any questions about the item itself. I just have a question. It's probably better for our CFO. What are the parameters for us to use ambulance receipts or reserves funds? Are there certain things we can use it on and not use it on? It seems like we pull from that account for a wide array of different things.
Mr. Crane, so the threshold to be able to use the ambulance appropriations account is it has to have an emergency medical services function to it. No other department could tap it if it does not have an EMS function. You're right, where especially the balance that we have in this account, because it is used as a direct offset to our budget, I'm very protective of this account. But there are certain things that I use it for, like the cancer screenings every three years, you know, we've done that. This has an EMS component, obviously, because it's an active threat class tied in with paramedics removing people from buildings. So it has to be the right project in order for me to, you know, say, yes, I'm willing to tap ambulance receipts for that. But that's the threshold, is it has to have some ambulance-related or EMS function in order to be able to use that account.
Thank you.
I also am supportive of it. I just have a question in that we would largely, in any large-scale event, would need to be calling in probably mutual aid, both for fire and police. Is there any plan to include neighboring departments, or does SEMLEC do certain things like that type of training so that you all kind of can figure out how to?
Thank you for the question. There will be, obviously, from the fire and the police departments, we'll have to actually recruit officers from other departments in order to fill out the training because of the numbers that it requires for actual participants. On day two, it involves the communications section as well, where they proceed through a script, and we respond to that. So as the chief said, it's called Active Attack Integrated Response. So it's stop the killing, stop the killing, stop the bleeding, and then render first aid, and they have hot zones, warm zones, cold zones. So it's a joint, obviously joint training, but we will need to recruit other officers, and they'll need to recruit other firefighters. And two of our instructors were, well, actually are, on the SEMLEC SWAT team, so they teach it across the region as well.
Thank you, yeah.
Questions? Nope.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval on Warren Article Seven.
Second. So we have a motion and a second to recommend approval on Warren Article Seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, Article Eight is to see if the town meeting will vote to meet compliance with the MBTA Community Law by amending the Auburn zoning bylaws, Sections 3.2, 2.3 apartments, I beg your pardon, by Sections 3.2, .2, .3 apartments, 4.1, .7 special permit uses, 4.3, .5, .1 use, and 4.3, .6, .1 minimum lot size in unsued areas, and add Section 3.2, .2, .4 multifamily as follows. And then it's as is written.
Madam Chair, I just have one question for Dr. Menard. So this was provided in consultation with the state for us to be in compliance with the MBTA Community Law. This seems like a moving goalpost. I'm supportive of it, but it seems like a moving goalpost. Every year, we think we got it, we make changes, and then we come back the next time, and we're going to make more changes. As far as you know, this is what they're saying now.
Yeah, it's been very frustrating. But yes, you were with them over the summer. These were the items they pulled out. I'm hopeful that this will do it. At least proven that we're trying to make an effort to be compliant over the years. So I'm hopeful this is the last time.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Dan?
Yeah, I just, you have, will you retain or recommend retaining special permit in the Highway Business District? Don't we have some preferred sites for multifamily dwellings in Highway Business, plus we have a mixed use, which has run a mixed use since '85 and has never been used up at BJ? So why would we not want to have that also site plan approval?
It's been special permit in the Highway Business. I just wasn't considering changing that at the time, just because I was just trying to parallel the multifamily apartments with the same permitting. Certainly something to change in the future. Multi-dwelling is allowed in certain areas. Multi-business use and combined business use, so.
Regional mall is an ideal place to have it as well, and we have it as special permit. And Highway Business, most of Highway Business abuts RA. So it makes sense. Obviously, there are places that it doesn't.
Right.
The areas, but it would make sense if you don't mind looking at it with zoning and planning. There might be some pitfalls that I'm not thinking of. It just seems like we've identified some of these locations in those areas, and I wouldn't want developers to look at that and say, I don't, as you're pointing out, the whole purpose of this is we don't want them having to jump through additional hoops. So anyways, sorry for the commercial. Thank you.
Welcome the feedback.
Okay, any other questions on Article Eight?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval on Warren Article Eight.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so you might as well stay there, please. So we are looking now at Article Nine, to see if the town meeting will vote to amend the Auburn zoning bylaws, Section 3.8 restricted uses, and 3.9 accessory uses, as follows as is printed in the warrant. Do we have any questions?
Not so much a question, more of a statement. I'm happy to see you advancing bylaw changes that will hopefully make it easier for people to come in, do business, such as the farmer's market. I'm sure I'm not the only one who has heard complaints that Auburn is not the easiest place to do business in, or get a permit from. So I'm hoping that this is the first of several that we'll see, either from yourself, the health department, the building department, et cetera, and looking at our processes and streamlining them and making it easier for various uses to come into town. Sorry for my commercial.
No stealing my material. Adam, just a quick question. I see that you're crossing out earth removal. How is earth removal and earth fill handled if we're taking it out of this area?
Those are in the general bylaws now. Those are moved out of zoning a few years ago. So it's just cleaning up that old language.
It makes sense to have them in both places. Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of Warren Article Nine.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve Warren Article Nine. Any questions? I beg your pardon, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we're all set. Thank you, Dr. Menard. Article Ten, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $50,000 from free cash for personnel expenses and any other related costs associated with the Dr. Robert Goddard Centennial Celebration Weekend in March 2026, or act on relative, anything relative thereto by the town manager.
Thank you. Yes, through the chair. In our meetings with the Centennial Committee, and also in the meetings with the Friends of the Robert Goddard Centennial, there has been discussion about how we manage a large influx of people that come here to these events, whether we have the events or not, actually. I think we'll have an influx of people, at least at the golf course on March 16. So what we did to try to prepare for that is follow what we do for the fireworks, and anticipate the public safety that we're going to need if we have an influx of people like we anticipate. Right now, we're planning on a Saturday event at Goddard Park, and also a Monday event at the golf course. And whether we have those or not, I still think that, you know, based on our communication with Charles Slackin and a few other people in the world of rockets, they feel like we're going to have this influx. And I know we're raising money, the Friends are raising money, but we don't want to take the chance that we don't have the funding needed. I'm hoping we don't need it. I'm hoping that the fundraisers can raise money for that part, but they're focused on the events of the days, the speakers, the role players, the rockets that will be shot off the day of on the 16th, and things like that. So that is the reason why I made this request.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah. Madam Chair, I'm going to take the opportunity to ask this question. It's related, but not directly related. Will the park be done by this date? It's dragged on for a really long time. So I'm just going to take the advantage of this and ask if, what the status of the park is, and will it be done?
The Goddard Park next to it?
Yeah, the Goddard Park, the bridge, the locking path, the streetlights, the pedestrian-scale lighting, the whole kit and caboodle that has to be done before we have this influx of people.
Hi, Joanna. Hi. Joanna Paquin, hi.
Thank you. So the lighting was installed by the DPW, so that is complete. And we've had some coordination issues with the contractor. One of the main issues was the missile, and what to do with it, how to transport it. And I think at this point, we've resolved that problem. that problem. The, I saw the contractor up there this morning, so we've gotten them back on site and I have full faith that once they can actually do the work and have access to that, they'll go fast.
If I can, go fast meaning do we have a timeline like October into October or are we talking February?
So I've been told that once they're able to get to the site for the concrete sidewalks, which would be the bulk of the work, it's about a two-week time period for full construction.
So it shouldn't go into March?
No. It should not.
So since we typically shouldn't pour concrete in the wintertime, we're looking at November, the park will be done?
So it would just depend on what we're doing for the monument. We're expecting the design for the base of the monument this week, and then we'll be moving forward. But we're coordinating with the contractor and all the designers to get that going as well.
If I may, so preparing for influx, are we just talking about additional staff needed for traffic flow? Or is there additional work related to influx of people? I'm not as familiar with that.
Our concern is the public safety aspect. Police, fire, car accidents, parking, transportation from maybe we're going to have to call the mall and, you know, do similar to what we do on the Fourth of July. As we get closer, we'll get a better idea, but we really are not sure. So we just want to be available. It is mostly going to be for staff time, for overtime, for, just to make sure that if any people, visitors, come to Auburn, that they're safe and they're able to come in and come out safely and park.
And just that's my concern is it, I know it's for the public safety aspect. I don't want to be too restrictive, but I mean, this is pretty general in that, and it doesn't talk about the influx of people. So I just, I'm wary of a fifty thousand dollar check to use for something that's not as defined. That's just where I stand. I'm not against having that money there. I just feel the explanation isn't necessarily what's written.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so it's for traffic control, you know, those types of things, everything that we do for the Fourth of July, making sure that there's staff on hand from the fire department at the golf course when we're having an event, also at Goddard Park when we have event. So it's really staff time for public safety is what I'm looking at for this money. I'm hoping that everything else will be taken care of by the fundraising, and I will definitely brief the board as we move forward. As the Friends continue to move forward, they're making things for the Goddard Centennial that they're going to be able to sell to residents. So you'll see that hitting the neighborhood soon. So it's a pretty exciting time for the town of Auburn.
Joanna, do you have a punch list for what is left to be done for the park?
Not with me, but that's part of the contract, so I can provide it to the board.
I don't need to see it. I just want to make sure that, how many items are still left to be completed, I guess? If you can, if you don't know now, that's fine. You can let us know, or you can let me know, whatever. Send me an email, but.
So the concrete construction, the concrete sidewalk construction is part of that. On the fire station side, there is still some bituminous walkways that need to be finished on the library side. And we're also having Amarillo do some additional work to move the model rocket to a new place. So there's additional work that they're doing, but for the original portion of the project, that as well, as the monument.
Everything left to be done is to be done by a contractor? Am I hearing that correctly?
Yes.
And everything is going to be in compliance so that we don't have an issue with that? How will inspections be done? Because obviously the contractor is doing their work. Do we have that figured out so that we can make sure that when they do the work, we're not having to, you know, then say, you got to dig it out and do it right, you know, or correct something?
So I have my engineer on site. Whenever they're on site, he makes site visits. So he's there, you know, any day that they are there. Yeah, so we're making sure.
Another question. Is part of this contract for the contractor to restore the library grounds that have been fenced off, that have taken quite a beating?
Yes.
So those will be restored before the March event as well?
Yes.
For the article in the language, I would just caution us not to restrict it too much because if there's, if the town needs to pivot because of something, we don't want it so tied down that we now have to go to the town meeting to unstick the glue. So, but I think, I'm sure the manager will make it plain what the purpose is at town meeting, you know, so.
So I just have two quick questions. Are we talking, Dory, are we talking about shuttles to, also to bring people from perhaps the mall up to?
We are.
Up to the golf course in March?
Yes.
All right. And just one more question. I'm afraid, yeah, sorry Joanna, come on. I have just a question about the rocket. So right now, it's on, it's laying down on its side there, and the ecutarium's working with Amarillo, and they're trying to figure out who can do the work that's necessary on it. So are we talking about just moving it to another place in town?
So it is my understanding that the structural engineer that's going to be working on the rocket, I think he's putting, he's going to be cutting, disassembling it?
Yep.
And putting into three pieces so that they can actually move it, so that it's not so heavy that they can.
Okay, so it'll move to his shop?
Yes.
Okay, out of town. All right, thank you. That's all I need to know. Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Article ten?
One last thing. I know we mentioned the Auburn Mall. Can we try to find multiple staging areas if we're going to provide transportation? Just because people may not be able to physically get to the mall, if the schools, you know, obviously we have West Street, we have a fairly substantial, you know, depending on when the event is. You know, we have Packer Chog School, we have the senior center, just so that we're not forcing or creating more of a traffic jam. And also, if somebody can walk there but can't drive there, it would just be helpful so that they could have, you know, a location in West Auburn, a location up on the hill, you know, maybe something at Franklin Field so that you get the Boy Street area covered as well. You know, obviously, I understand that complicates the logistics, but I think, you know, for residents, many who cannot drive, you know, it would just be nice if they could walk in their neighborhood and not have to jam the streets with traffic. And that might help overall with local traffic anyway.
Through the chair, absolutely.
I will make a motion that we recommend approval of warrant Article ten.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recommend Article ten. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. So Article eleven, to see if town meeting will vote to appropriate a sum of money from free cash to the town OPEB, other post-employment benefits trust or act on anything relative thereto. So, yeah, good, thanks Karen. So I just had some questions about free cash. What was the amount that we can spend? In other words, what was the amount of the increase?
Well, the free cash hasn't been certified yet.
Okay.
That's why there aren't any amounts in here. But my estimates are showing that there is a decrease in the amount, the decrease in the amount that we can spend because of the fact that we're budgeting closer to actuals. Times are tough. And so we're estimating, I'm estimating that it's probably going to be about half a million dollars that we could potentially spend. So we would have an increase of a million. We could spend up to five hundred thousand. So in the past, we've put five hundred thousand into OPEB and then two fifty into stabilization. And at this point, there isn't projected to be those balances. So as soon as we know what the certified amounts are, then the town manager and myself are going to make a recommendation as to what to put into these two, these two accounts.
Isn't this, I thought they would have it certified by now. When is it going to be certified?
It's going to be certified soon. We have the treasure collector retired this year, so we're just a little bit behind. But last year, I believe it was certified in early October.
Okay.
So it's about, because last year, I think we had our meeting in November. So it's a little bit later.
Okay. I was able to pull numbers from the DOR DLS site, and it looked like they were for fiscal twenty twenty-five. So it looked like those were all set. So those numbers are there, but they're just not certified yet?
Nope, there shouldn't be any certified numbers on the website for fiscal twenty-five. Maybe it's fiscal twenty-four that's certified as of seven one of twenty-four? Maybe those were the ones that you were looking at?
Yeah, it said, okay, I'll take another look. Thank you. Okay, so, and we'll know an amount on the night of town meeting, we'll know an amount to put into these two, eleven and twelve?
Yes, we'll know before that as well. But yes, there will be amounts to put in there before.
So do we want to, we usually do here.
Steve has a question.
Yeah, Steve, go ahead.
So I mean, our financial policies are pretty good, and we've been able to get a good credit rating. Is there any impact if we don't put a certain dollar amount into that? That would impact our credit. And I know we've had guidelines in the past where, again, we tried to do five hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty. Is there a number if we go below that it could have an impact on our rating?
As long as we continue to show that we're making an effort to put and follow our policies that we're putting amounts into the OPEB, then there shouldn't be any type of a, you know, unfavorable look on it.
And if I may, through the chair, I have asked, because this is a change from obviously what the town is used to. So I asked Karen to do outreach to our financial advisors to make sure that the decision we make is the right one. Should we put more in stabilization? Should we put more in OPEB? Where should we put the money? Because I don't want to make any mistakes and have it affect our bond rating. So we've been in constant contact about things like that, not only for this, but for the other articles as well. But our financial advisors have been tied into all of those discussions.
And then knowing that times are tough and we keep coming back looking for more money, is it, again, beneficial to put less in those and have it available for that flexibility aspect? Or, again, I don't know what that limit is, but again, coming back and looking for additional funds, knowing things are tight, I want to make sure we're on the right path, but not restrict us with the uncertainty in the not-too-distant future?
I agree. I think from my experience, it is very important for our bond rating to make sure that we contribute to OPEB and stabilization, those two. We still have a very generous free cash amount that we have, which I'm grateful that we can use that for a rainy day if we need to. We don't have to go to stabilization. But you're absolutely right. We don't want to be, we don't want to restrict ourselves too much. So that's why we've tied in professionals who deal with this all the time. We don't need to pay more in interest because it's more difficult for us to balance the budget. I have done a lot of research on some of the area towns, and they're all going through this unfortunately. Auburn is very fortunate that we are still in a very good position. I'm not sure, you know, I think we just have to pay very close attention to it moving forward. And talking to the financial advisors about these different accounts will be done often.
Thank you.
May I make a comment too? While we can put money into our OPEB fund, we don't really have a mechanism to take it out. Is that correct? Until further down the road. And we wouldn't want to do that. But we can put money, free cash, into our stabilization account, and we can spend from that account if necessary, as long as we have a two-thirds majority approval at town meeting. So it's not going away forever, I guess I want to say, too.
So, Madam Chair, I'd ask that we, the board, consider holding these two. I don't like approving or recommending one way or the other unknown amounts. So I'd like to ask if we can hold these to a future meeting until those numbers can be filled?
Can we vote to take no position at this time and then meet prior to town meeting and make the recommendation at that time?
I prefer to follow the finance committee. What they did is they just chose to recommend at a later date. I don't believe they took a vote of recommendation one way or the other.
They did not, and for the same reason.
So I'd rather follow their lead on this and just hold it and not take a vote.
Okay, so that would be for Article eleven. Let me read Article twelve, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate a sum of money from free cash to the town stabilization fund or act on anything relative thereto. And we want to do the same for that, right?
Madam Chair, any questions?
Yes.
So I think we're fairly healthy in stabilization. OPEB, where we're behind. So, you know, I do hope that both the CFO and the town manager will come to the elected appointed boards and ask for our recommendation and not just give us a number. Because I think we should be weighing in on where that works, which fund is the preferred one. And obviously, we'll listen to our financial advisors and we'll listen to our paid professionals. But I think we need to get into the habit of asking and not telling the elected board and the finance committee what these numbers are. There should be more of a conversation with us.
And through the chair, if I may, I have no problem with that. I just want to get the details from our financial advisor before I bring that to you.
Absolutely appreciate that you're doing your due diligence. Not that I'm surprised, but it's good to hear. And I think town meeting members and finance committee members and this member is putting a lot of energy into it. I'm just, going forward, I just think we need to have more conversations. You shouldn't be getting these things and then, oh, what do you want to recommend and not? Well, maybe we have a different point of view and we should be working that through. So that's my eighty-minute commercial. So thank you.
May I also ask that perhaps you can just prepare a report or a one-page report for us, telling us what our OPEB, most recent OPEB balance liability is, according to the auditors, and then maybe a list of what the amount is that we've been contributing through the years. I think we probably started about ten years, maybe twelve years ago now, or a little more than that. So if you could just provide that information at some point in the future, I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, so Article thirteen, to see if the town meeting will vote to accept Mass General Law Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause twenty-second G, which reads as follows, "In any city or town that accepts this clause, real estate that is the domicile of a person but is owned by a trustee, conservator, or other fiduciary for the person's benefit, if the real estate would be eligible for exemption under Clause twenty-second, twenty-second A, twenty-second B, twenty-second C, twenty-second D, twenty-second E, or twenty-second F, if the person were the owner of the real estate, or act on anything relative thereto."
Yes, absolutely. Through the chair, this, these three articles are, they equate to the articles that the Board of Selectmen put forward at the annual town meeting that was voted and approved at the town meeting. When we sent it to the state for discussion and processing, there were questions about the different clauses in the twenty-twos. And although we probably could have moved forward with the original vote, it was recommended through them and through our attorney to, number one, separate them into three different articles and revote them so that there was no confusion and no room for someone to say that it was meant for something else.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just said two, one statement. One was that I know that the warrant article that was put forward at the May Town Meeting that was approved, it went through town council, so I kind of wish he would have caught that then so we wouldn't have to be doing this. Now, in terms of my actual question, because these are now happening in this, the fall instead of in the spring town meeting, will this push back the date that anyone who is poised to benefit from these tax incentives, that they will not be able to get it? Or does it delay them getting the tax benefits?
Through the chair, I'm not sure, but I'll find out. I can't imagine it can go retro. Through the chair, I'm not sure, but I'll find out. I'm, I can't imagine it can go retro, even though they did have the information from the annual town meeting, and they are so similar. But I will find out for you.
I just want to make sure that the intended recipients, those being our veterans, benefit from the vote that the town is trying to give for, for their tax abatements. And then it doesn't get delayed even further.
Okay, any questions?
Just, just a request that town council be prepared to address this, that he, just like May Town Meeting, be at the front of the room, and that when these get called up, he has a clear explanation, so town meeting members understand why they're being asked to do this again. In relation to the veterans' situation, would board members object to us requesting that the veterans' agent be asked if he would like to cosponsor that?
I have no objection to that.
If, if the town manager wouldn't mind seeing through whatever administrative channels that needs. It would just be nice to have a, you know, he works with the vets very closely, and it would be nice to have him on as a cosponsor.
I'll look into it.
I will recommend approval of Warren Article 13.
A second. All right, we have a motion and a second to recommend Article 13. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Article 14, to see if the town meeting will vote to accept Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22nd I, which reads as follows. In a city or town that accepts this clause and is certified by the Commissioner of Revenue to be assessing all property at full and fair cash value, an abatement granted pursuant clause 22nd, 22nd A, 22nd B, 22nd C, 22nd E, or 22nd F shall be increased annually by an amount equal to the increase in the cost of living as determined by the Consumer Price Index for such year. The Department of Revenue shall annually inform each city or town that accepts this clause of the amount of such increase or act on anything relative thereto.
No questions, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of Warren Article 14.
Be here a second, second?
Second, yeah, sorry.
That's okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve Article 14. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No. All right, and then Article 15. To see if the town meeting will vote to accept Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22nd J, which reads as follows, and I'm not going to read it all, but it is as, as presented in the article.
I will make a motion that we recommend approval.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to recommend approval for Article 15. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No, okay. So now we have Article 16, which is to see if the town meeting will vote to approve a new traffic study bylaw to read as follows. And then the, um, it is, it is as presented in the warrant. It's a very long one. So do we have any questions on Article 16?
I know we, we previously discussed this. I'd like the board to consider holding this as well, to see if the zoning bylaw review committee is able to meet, discuss it with our professional staff, and, and make a final recommendation before town meeting.
I would, I would appreciate that as well. I think it's very important. And if we can just make sure that staff reviews it and make sure that, uh, everything that needs to be in it is in it, and council is giving it a thorough review and making sure that all the citations and relevant legal issues are covered.
So it sounds like you're saying that a recommendation we made at a later date?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So that's what we'll do for Article 16. And so we will have to make sure to meet before, um, the special town meeting. Article 17 is to see if the town meeting will vote to accept Nancy Drive as a public way from Vinyl Street to the end of Nancy Drive for a total distance of 1,044 feet, as shown on a plan prepared by BNR Survey Incorporated, entitled "Street Acceptance Plan Prepared for the Town of Auburn," dated June 10th, 2025, and as filed with the town clerk. Acceptance is subject to receipt of a deed from the owner to the town for Nancy Drive and payment of all recording costs by the owner or act on anything relative thereto. Hi, come on up. Our DPW director, Joanna Paquin.
So this article is for the street acceptance of Nancy Drive. This was constructed per the subdivision rules and regs. It got to the point of actually getting a planning board recommendation. It was a little bit of a different process at the time, but it went to town meeting with the planning board recommendation, and the only step that is left is, what was left was for the residents to, to have a survey plan prepared for recording, and then a layout hearing to be held by the board.
So are you saying we've already voted on some, this part of this?
No, so I would recommend that the board hold off on a recommendation of this and schedule a layout hearing, um, prior to town meeting.
This board that holds that layout hearing, or is it the planning board?
Uh, the, the select board.
The select board does, okay.
Layout meeting?
Our next meeting is Tuesday after Indigenous Peoples' Days.
Yeah.
And I know that at least one member won't be present. I just have a couple other questions. I just want to confirm that, so this portion is built to our standards?
Or at least, excuse me, at least the standards at the time. They were, um, they were, the planning board had already approved it. We had, um, we, we had discussions with the, with the residents. The residents hired a survey company to prepare a layout plan, as well as the, um, the, the description, and the legal description for the road, and made sure that the, the bounds were set where they are supposed to.
How long ago was that process?
The process for...
Uh, for the, when the planning board approved it, because you said it meant, I think, specifications at that time, but...
In the 70s.
Oh, okay.
The 70s. Okay. Have, have, have you done any testing just to make sure that it, it meets the current standards? Or, or have you done analysis to see what's different? You know, I'm, I'm not so concerned about the sidewalks or the street trees. I'm more concerned about the, the roadway itself, you know, was it built properly?
Um, well, I don't have any backup information on how it was built. But, I mean, it's been probably close to 50 years. And the road does need to be repaved at some point. It's not one of our worst roads, but it's definitely, um, that's basically where the, um, when the residents realized that they were still, you know, that their road was still a private road. It was never accepted, never went through the process.
So, does it have to go back through a planning board process at all because of the long delay?
I believe because they voted at the time, and they, but I'll let Dr. Menard lay in on that.
No timeline to file it at the registry or anything? It seems like they got the vote, but they never filed it. Or they never did, what was it, the follow-up steps? I don't know if there's a, a time limit where they have to go back through the process?
I, I don't think there's a time limit for the process. There's nothing ever 2015 street acceptance guidelines. That's kind of what we're basing off this and other projects on. Normally, the developer would have gone through a lot of this ahead of time. But we are at where the, we should have legal documents for council to review. There would be like the, what, what we're actually going to be taking over, which would be, in this case, the, the roadway. I would submit a report to planning board for public acceptance, which was already, something was done in the 70s. Then planning board would submit a recommendation letter to the town manager. So that would happen, if we can do this in that short a space, we could add that to a, um, meeting. BOS refers back to the proposed layout back to planning board. Planning board has 45 days to respond, so after the layout hearing, it does go back to planning board for a public hearing. And then they make their recommendation to town meeting.
So we have, what, 28 days before town meeting? Do we actually have time to have a layout hearing, have it go back to the planning board for their public hearing, then bring it back before town mea- I mean, it sounds like that's, there's not enough time there.
So, if I may, through the chair, um, so the previous, the, the steps that have already gone through, the, the, the procedure that it went through was that it went to town meeting, and the planning board acceptance was part of that town meeting vote. So the town meeting vote, um, accepted the planning board's recommendation. They voted that that road was sufficient, and they would, um, that the Board of Selectmen would lay out, would hold a layout hearing. And that was the vote of the plant, the, the town meeting, that the last step would be to go to the Board of Selectmen. They would hold the layout hearing, and then it would go back to the town meeting for, um, for formal acceptance. So we're kind of dealing with two different processes. So I don't know if we go through the 2015 process where we've already gone through it, or if we're going through the, um, the process that, you know, the outstanding items that we're still missing.
So, I guess I'm, I'm a little confused and a little concerned, because we have a planning department saying it has to follow this process, DPW saying it has to follow process B. There's, I, I understand there's some question we don't know. Have we asked town council what we should be doing just to make sure that, that, you know, what we're bringing to town meeting is a correct package, so that unlike the veterans thing, we're not coming back next year and, and, and going through the whole process again? You know, I, I certainly want to, you know, be responsive to the, to the, uh, the residents of Nancy Drive, but I also want to make sure that whatever we're doing, we're doing correctly. And it sounds like there's a question mark on everyone's page on, on what the process should and should not be.
I can certainly, um, through the, the town manager, reach out to town council. I can provide all the information that, um, the town clerk has provided, so that we are definitely on the right path. But the next step would be to ha- hold the layout hearing. And that, whether it goes to town meeting or not, um, that would be the next step.
Yeah, the layout hea- hearing will have to happen anyways. If there's time for that, can...
I, I guess, you know, I wish we would have worked out all of that differences before we were three weeks before town meeting and put this on the warrant, where we can't take it off now. So I, I'm a little frustrated by that, that this wasn't worked out long before we got to this point. And ourselves, finance committee and town meeting are put into this point where we're three weeks out, and we don't know whether we should follow path A, path B, or another path entirely.
We can, we won't. Your name's on it. But we can certainly, at town meeting, absolutely the director could ask that this be continued to the annual town meeting, and then it would be taken up. So it doesn't sound like this is an urgent issue, but I share your concern about, we have something from the town clerk who said that town meeting did something, but we're saying it's not a public way, even though it sounds like the planning board followed whatever the process was in the 70s. Town meeting did its part. So how is it that we're, as a community, as an organization, saying at this point in time to the residents of Nancy Drive that they don't have a public way? Because to me, town meeting accepts roads. Town meeting accepted the road. The planning board did what the planning board needed to do in 1970-whatever. So I think town meeting will have a question as to why this isn't considered a public way. And we've certainly seen over time, like Old Cart Road, where the developer literally did a house a, a decade, seemingly. That was like his life's work for 30 years. He, they did like one house and then walked away from it. But that is totally different. He didn't do anything. It sounds like the developer did what he was supposed to do. The pla- the town as an organization did what it was supposed to do. So for me to have any sort of recommendation to town meeting, I think we need to find out why it is that we as an organization are saying that it's not a public way when it sounds like it should be, and why we're doing it this way.
Um, through the chair, I think to, to your point, I, the DPW director said it had to come back to the select board for a layout hearing, and that is what never happened. So it sounds like the process in the 70s included much more than just getting the vote from town meeting.
Well, we don't know that, though, Ms. Ruffly. So that's why I'm concerned, that we're saying to residents that this isn't a public way. And I know none of us sitting here are attorneys, and I don't see Mr. Henigan here. So I suggest, having sat through many, 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 many town meeting meetings, if I were sitting in the audience and you're going to ask me to vote on this, there are so many holes in the explanation that we need to close, so the town meeting clearly understands why they're correcting an action from 1972. Because to Ms. Ruffly's point, if all we need to do is the Board of Selectmen magic presto, we have a layout hearing and suddenly it's a public way, why is it that we're asking town meeting to take some sort of step? And I'm going to guarantee you, the town meeting, quite rightfully, is going to shake its head and see, what the hell are we doing and why, why are we doing this?
Through the chair, I, I do have the town meeting vote for the road. It states, "I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to lay out the, and set bounds on Nancy, Nancy Drive for a distance of 1,044 feet, more or less from Vinyl Street, provided that the cost of layout and setting of bounds is borne by the developer, uh, by the owner developer or abutters of the street." Now, this is the same language as the subsequent Warren Article for Old Meeting House Road. And in looking at the records for Old Meeting House Road, it looks like that, um, that street acceptance was voted on at a subsequent meeting. So that may, led me to believe that the process was that this wasn't an official, um, vote by the town meeting. It was an initial vote to, to set the, um, to set the layout hearing. And then, um, it was, it, basically looking at it consistently for, with other, other roads. That was the, the procedure that was...
So I guess the, you know, and I don't want to speak for, for, for others, but it seems like the confusion is that you're going by the 1970s standards, which is, uh, the planning board takes a vote, town meeting then votes, pending a layout by the select board that then goes back to town meeting. What we're used to is what Dr. Menard is saying, which is all of that takes place first, and then town meeting is the final vote. And I guess what we're asking for is to know from legal counsel, are we playing by 1970s rules, or are we playing by 2025 rules? Because they're very different. And I think that's what we're asking for, is to have an explanation. Not, because if there's five of us here confused, you can bet, you know, as much money as you have that town meeting is going to be just as confused, and it's going to be just as, you know, even, even more people confused and asking these same questions. You know, I, 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 I agree, you know, that, that we might want to think about, and this was because of the DPW director's name is on this, pushing this off to May. I don't know, and, and I'm going to ask, do we currently plow Nancy Drive?
We plow all our private streets.
Okay, so, so we plow, so they wouldn't lose any services through the winter if this gets delayed at all? I know they want their pavement taken care of, but it sounds like it wouldn't happen anyways because it doesn't fall on our, on our immediate list anyways. So there's no harm or delay to them, and they can rest, be rest assured that we're going through the proper process. But we, you know, I, I think I would join in making the strong recommendation that we involve town council, figure out what's going on here. And if we can't do that before we get to town meeting, then we look to hold till May instead of... And if we can't do that before we get to town meeting, then we look to hold until May instead of trying to rush everything in three weeks.
And did anybody look at minutes from the seventies to see if a layout hearing was actually done? Because they met like weekly.
I believe that the town clerk was looking, did look for them and she could not find any record of that.
Yeah, couldn't find anything.
What year are we talking about?
And there was nothing filed at the registry. I mean, they would have had to file whatever that layout plan at the registry and there was nothing filed. Okay.
Nineteen seventy-one.
This is more for legal counsel, if I may. So, if anyone's bought a house after this time, they did not buy a private street or did they buy a private street? I need, they need to understand that because if the road is deeded to them and they're buying a house, that could have impacts. Do we know for certain a hundred percent of residents want it to be public?
They paid for the survey to, to, for it to become.
A hundred percent of the residents paid for the, like, I just want to make sure that they're all on board with that. Because again, if I'm buying a piece of property and my neighbors, I don't know what the covenants are around that. But depending on what rules we're following, that could have long-term impacts, especially if someone feels the value is either increased or decreased.
So, through, through the chair, it is my understanding, and I obviously wasn't part of those transactions, but it was my understanding that all of the residents had tripped in for the survey. But that's, that's what the layout hearing is for because all the residents will get notification of the layout hearing and the intent to have that road be made public.
I think we need legal counsel to weigh in before moving forward.
Can I ask, have we, in the past, since the seventies, made improvements to this road where the residents may have, like, if we, have we paved it? Have we done any of that kind of stuff since the seventies that residents may use as precedent saying that you accepted this as a town road because you've already repaved it?
So, we, so, it wasn't repaved. We might patch a pothole, but that's, that's the way that we operate on most private roads. We provide, we may, want to make sure that there's access for emergency services.
Thanks, thank you.
I don't think anybody alive today at DPW could answer that question. We would have highway surveys. I'm not going to go to the cemetery and dig them up. But it would not be unusual if they didn't do that at that time.
I guess, do we want to hold this or do we want to, for the petitioner?
From a leadership position, I think we need to get answers, not just for ourselves, but for town meeting. And so, that would be.
I guess I'd ask them.
Hold it so that we can figure it out. But strong recommendation would be to, for the DPW director to ask town meeting to, to continue this to the annual town meeting so that these issues can be resolved effectively instead of trying to rush and lose something.
So, we saying, take no position at this time?
Let's see how far they get.
I think we're asking to hold it, not take a.
Okay, so we're holding it then?
I think it's subtly advisable with all the questions to, to have the petitioner request it. But let's see how far we get.
Okay, so are we talking hold or are we talking?
We're talking to hold.
Recommendation will be made at a later date?
We're talking about hold for now and then we'll make a recommendation.
So, so our version of hold is the same as recommendation will be made at a later.
All right, that's fine, that's fine, all right. Okay, so that's Article seventeen. Let's look at Article eighteen. To see if the town meeting will vote to grant to National Grid temporary and/or permanent easements across, over, and under town property on Auburn Street for the purpose of constructing, reconstructing, repairing, maintaining, operating, and patrolling a transmission line of high and low voltage consisting of at least three poles with associated wires and cables and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager to execute any and all documents necessary for the conveyance of such easements to National Grid in accordance with law or act on anything relative thereto.
So, I have a request that this article go and town council review it because my understanding is the Office of Town Manager has custody and control but cannot sell land. That's solely the Board of Selectmen's role. And I'm not saying it because, oh, it's ours. I could care less, to be honest with you, other than I don't want somebody selling land without somebody knowing about it. So, again, much like, as I said, with the fire chief, we want to make sure that these articles are correct. We don't want to introduce the Town Manager or the Office of the Town Manager if that isn't legally required. Because then people get confused and it's on, and it's on us as an organization. So, I would just ask the town council review it and to ensure that the language and make any necessary corrections before we take a vote.
May I also, through the chair, ask, it says temporary and/or permanent. If it's temporary, then it's not permanent. And if it's permanent, it's not temporary. So, why is it written like that?
So, through the chair, this is language that we received from National Grid and that's probably why it's not specific to Auburn. We can, I, I can certainly amend it if need be on the floor. It is for a grant of a permanent easement for an existing utility pole that they will upgrade once they receive the easement.
So, whereabouts is this again? So, we're talking about the area basically around one telephone pole? I mean, one electrical pole?
Yes.
It's on Auburn Street?
It's on Auburn Street. This is the pole that we would be getting electricity for, for Goddard Park. This is where it came about. So, they are, they're willing to upgrade the pole. They, they recognize that they need to upgrade it and that would be part of their responsibility. But they are requiring the town, but they need to replace the pole. So, they're going to be replacing the pole in the same, in the same location as it is now. There is no easement currently and they are requesting that we provide an easement or the town provides an easement.
I understand, thank you.
So, they're replacing an existing pole with an upgraded pole and, but they found out, while they were doing that, that we never provided them an easement for that initial pole. I, I agree, you know, I'm supportive of this, obviously, and want to, you know, get this all taken care of before we have our, our celebration in March. But I do agree with Mr. Carpenter's request that we see if the Town Manager has a role to play here. Not that I am opposed if, if that's what the charter calls for, but I certainly, everyone knows I'm cautious about usurping of our authority.
Through the chair, just for your information, we did receive the, the easement language and it does have the, the board signatures and nobody else's.
It's not a big deal, let's just, again, I don't have an issue. It's not, it's ours, we, you know. Honestly, it's not that much of a thrill to sign my name. I just want it to be correct so that, again, we just had nineteen seventy-one come to visit us. We don't want to be alive and have somebody come at us. So, if we can just make sure that it's correct.
So, we're talking about recommendation will be made at a later date?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so that is Article eighteen. Let's look at Article nineteen. To see if the town meeting will vote to approve a thirty-five-hundred-foot sewer rehabilitation project along Goddard Drive, beginning at Goddard Drive and extending through a cross-country easement towards Southhold Road and a Sword Street Force Main Rehabilitation Project with project limits starting at the Sword Street Pump Station, extending to the intersection of Jerome Ave and Hillside Street totaling four million seven hundred thousand dollars and to raise said funds by borrowing payable in not more than the term provided by law and any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by the vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of some such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount or act on anything relative thereto. So, we have you here, okay. Tell us about this, please.
So, we are looking at two projects and they're sewer rehabilitation projects. One cross-country down from Goddard Drive going down towards the, the diversion channel. I know of one sewer main break at that location. It happened to be right before Christmas. The previous DPW director was, was here. So, that definitely was a memory in our minds just because of the timing and because of the location. It is located near wetlands-sensitive areas. So, because it's, because of its location, because we already know that we have issues with it, we want to address it. And then the other project is, for the most part, along Route twelve, from the Sword Street Pump Station up, basically up Route twelve. To my knowledge, we've had three sewer main breaks in a very, very close proximity at that sewer main, at the sewer force main. So, we have been looking at addressing these, these issues. In June, the sewer commissioners voted to increase the sewer rates to fund this, fund these projects. And at the time, they were anticipating an increase of three hundred thousand dollars to be able to, to fund these.
The, can you repeat that, they expect an increase of what?
Three hundred thousand dollars annually.
Annually, okay.
Through the chair.
Yep.
Is there already a lot of work going on on the Sword Street, Southbridge Street area sewer work? Or I know there's a lot of construction there. Is that part of this or is it extending or am I completely off?
So, they have a water main that they were installing, the Auburn Water District project.
Is, is it in that general area?
It would be in, in that area, yes.
Questions?
So, you're talking about Sword Street. Which, what direction are you going to achieve this?
Going.
Talking about the diversion tunnel, which is behind Package Oak Hill.
I'm sorry, that, so, so that's the Goddard Park sewer main. So, there's, there's one sewer that we're going to be rehabilitating from, from Goddard, Goddard Drive towards, across country towards the diversion channel. And then the second project is the Sword Street Force Main from, from the, the pump station up Route twelve towards the vicinity of.
Hope Ave? Towards Worcester?
Yes, towards Worcester.
Hope Ave is the next, well, not necessarily the next cross street.
So, so it would, it would be around Jerome.
We're not impacting anything on the fifty acres that we bought on Southhold Road, are we?
No, no, it's not going that far.
May I ask?
Yep.
On the Goddard Drive one, you keep saying cross country. Can you explain what that means?
Sure, so it's not within the paved, paved right of way. We have an easement going cross-country or it's either on an easement or on town property. But it's through the woods and a little bit less accessible. And that's why I'm, I'm also considering this, more of a sensitive projects just because the only way to find out that we have a sewer main break is either looking at our data from, you know, once it goes down to Pen Rock Pump Station and seeing flows go down or if somebody actually, you know, maybe smells it. But it's remote, so it's, it's difficult to, to notice.
So, has it been scoped and we know the, the impacts there? I think you said thirty-five-hundred feet. Is that the entire distance or that's just the area that needs to get replaced?
That's the, that's the, the area that would be lined. So, there's, there's a combination of either pipelining or total excavation and replacement. There's, there's some spot areas that, prior to this, this project being put in front of the board, these pipes were, were camered, so we have a good idea of what the condition of the pipes are.
Goddard Ed is in a, in a cul-de-sac. Where, where on Goddard are we proposing to do this work? And have we talked to the neighbors? Has DPW talked to the neighbors about the potential impact? Things that they might need to prepare for as far as work commuting, kids getting into the bus stop, those type of things?
So, um, the Goddard area, I don't believe, I believe that it starts in the woods. So, it's at the end of the road. So, the majority of the, the work would actually be not in, on Goddard Drive, but as it extends out.
So, you're not pulling it towards the street? You're still leaving it in some sort of natural area? Just easier access, is that what I'm hearing? Are you paving something, what do you?
So, we're not going to be paving, they're going to be lining it. So, they're, they're going to mobilize on site and, like I said, there, there's, they're going to be excavating. So, there's going to be construction going to the site, but it's not going to be within the roadway. It's going to be off, off the roadway in, in those wooded areas.
We'll talk to the neighbors just to make sure that they're aware that this is going on because you guys start early in the morning, you know. I don't know what their habits are up there, but it would be nice if they got a heads up that this is going to happen and there's going to be some disruption, some noise.
Absolutely. I, I'm, I'm sure that they're already aware of it just because we're going to be going to Conservation Commission. So, the, 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 the abutters are going to be notified of, of that work as well, but.
When do you anticipate this work taking place?
So, I'm, I'm looking at bidding it over the winter.
So, it would take place until the spring, the earliest? And, and the bid will include restoration of any disturbed woodlands, replanting of trees, everything?
So, we wouldn't replant the trees. We actually keep that easement clear just so that.
You're going to clear cut it and keep it clear?
So, it's already clear cut.
Oh, it's already cleared, okay.
We might have to provide some stabilization for the equipment to go in, but, but yes, it would be restored.
I have a question about the borrowing. What kind of term are we talking about borrowing this over?
We could do it at a twenty or a thirty. We would probably recommend a twenty so that we could save on the interest costs, okay?
And what, what kind of borrowing is already happening at the DPW? What's already being paid off? Is there a lot of money outstanding or is there a lot of debt outstanding already?
There really isn't a lot of debt outstanding. And there is something that's, that's falling off soon as well. It's not as, as high as this one.
Right.
Maybe like a million-dollar one, but.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask, is that because we used, the last time sewer issues came up, we used ARPA funds for it? For the pumping station? I think that was the last time we, we appropriated sewer funds, right?
Perhaps, yeah.
I know Sword Street has had multiple issues. I know Holst from Quartz had multiple issues costing in hundreds of thousands of dollars to actually have trucks to take the waste and somewhere else. So, I don't remember if we, we probably did, but yes.
I think it was like Warren, I think it was the Warren Road Pumping Station.
We certainly did it for that, I know that, but, yeah.
If there's no other questions, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval.
One second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to recommend approval for Article nineteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
The reason we're talking about raising the sewer rates.
Until we actually needed it. So, um, so it wouldn't be money that was borrowed and then, you know, not used for, um, for years. Um, I know that there might be some, um, some prob- some difficulty in getting vendors.
Well, yeah, um, when we had the irrigation system designed last year, um, the architect was telling me that at that point last year, if we were deciding, if we said today we wanted to move forward with this project, he said it would probably be three years before you could get a qualified vendor to install the irrigation system. Because they're all that busy. There are not many golf course irrigation installers out there. He said a lot of them actually got out of the business, went into residential because there was more money in it.
So my question then would be, why are we going to authorize a borrowing? Put that on our balance sheet for 4.7 million dollars, which is going to be there because we've authorized it if we're not going to have a reasonable period of time. I understand, Karen, you're gonna say, "I'm not going out to borrow." But it's going to be carried on our balance sheet. The 4.7 million dollars is gonna be sitting there, which could impact our bond rating.
Through the chair if I could. This, this is actually 2 million dollars. And just to answer your question, we don't have any debt that's outstanding right now for the golf course. And I would think in order for us to get in line, for us to be able to, you know, to line up a vendor, we have to be, we have to have the funding authorized and in place.
But I would think you'd have a timeline, Karen, before you asked for a borrowing of 2.5 million dollars, even if it's half a million dollars. We, we have a history where we're getting murdered on projects that take 10 years to accomplish. And they get approved by this board and then they're like, you know, the invisible man. We don't hear anything about them. And the public is out there saying, "We're borrowing money. We're, we're authorizing borrowing." Town meeting members are getting concerned because it seems like when we take on a project, we don't have a timeline. We don't have the things in place. So, to me, if you're not going to even be prepared to do anything until the springtime, you're asking for this now. So, again, the timing to me is a little off. I don't have an objection to the project. What I have an objection to is constantly hearing complaints about the projects that we're undertaking and that they seem to last in inordinate amount of time.
Dory, did you want to?
Yes, please, can I speak to this?
Can I just ask a couple of questions before you do that?
Yep.
So, there's no bigger, you know, I'm, I'm one of the biggest critics of those long drawn out projects. Can I just ask a couple of questions? One, the superintendent said that we, we have already had this designed, so there is a plan ready to go. Through the town manager or the CFO, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, in order for municipality to put out a contract, you must have identified a funding source that is committed. So we cannot go out to bid until that happens.
That is correct.
And for us to go out to bid and secure a vendor, it sounds like our design consultant has said, you will get the, somebody under contract, but they likely will not start the work for two to three years because of how busy they are. So we have to put all these pieces in place now. In order to go out to bid, we have to authorize the funds. In order to get a contractor, we have to go out to bid and authorize the funds. In order to get on the calendar for two to three years from now, we have to authorize the bid, secure the funds, go out for contract. So it sounds like we have to do this now and, or if we delay, we're just kicking the can down the road even further. I understand the concerns about other projects that have gone on way too long and have been delayed for reasons that are not this. This is setting all the pieces up properly from the beginning. And hopefully, once we have the contractor under contract, we have the funds, we go out for bid, uh, I'm sorry, we go out and, and secure the funding. We will then follow through and make sure that project is done on budget, on time, with outside sources and not continue to tax our internal forces.
So you're prepared to do an RFP? Because that is not something that I heard you say to me.
But we have the documents ready for the, um, the irrigation project.
That, I could've saved myself three points on my blood pressure, but, um,
Did you want to say some more?
I don't want to be critical publicly, but again, these projects need to follow a reasonable timeline. So if we're talking about, as Mr. Crane said, when you go to town meeting, that needs to be made perfectly and abundantly clear that you're authorizing money. However, you're not gonna do a borrowing this time of year, but you might do a ban or whatever. This is a long-term project. And focus on, as Mr. Crane said, that we have a design, but because of, as Mr., I'm gonna call you Peter, I don't mean to be too familiar, has given us reason, but all of that should be out in the public so that people understand what is expected. I'm being asked today to do this, but I'm going to be, you know, waiting a little while to see it, you know.
If I can, Madam Chairperson, through the chair. First of all, I'd like to thank Peter for your detailed description. I know we've met to discuss this, but it's always interesting to hear you talk about it and your passion for it. One of the things that he said was, that actually Joanna said that's really important, is in order, like you said, um, to Mr. Carpenter, in order to stay competitive, we need to do this. We are not able to use golf carts the way we should be able to use them. Our drainage problems have prohibited that. And the amount of time that has gone into the preparation of this project at the golf course between Joanna and Peter is exorbitant to make sure that everything's lined up, the design is done, we're gonna go for this borrowing, we're going out to bid. But I do understand your point, Mr. Carpenter, because some of the projects have been delayed. This is not gonna be one of them on our part. If we can't find a vendor, then that's something else and I'll definitely brief the board. But the other thing that's important, just so for home, for the residents in town to know, is this is an enterprise account. So, yes, um, it comes from the people who use the golf course. They are the ones who are paying for this and that may be our residents, so through a fee process or whatever. But it's not tax levy funds. This is an enterprise account. And I think that's a really important point, um, to say before we move on.
I just want to be mindful of the competitiveness. We have a nine-hole golf course. We don't have 18. We have nine, so, and we're competing with other golf courses in the area. So, I'm glad here that we don't have a ton of debt. But just as we're making decisions, these are things that may irritate staff for us to say this, but I put my name on a ballot and I get to say certain things and I don't necessarily have to say them in a nice way. But I think I did say them in a fairly nice way tonight. But the residents are concerned. And if the resident's concerned, that means you can't do your job and you can't do your job and he can't do his job and she's getting a lot of emails. So, it rolls downhill and it rolls uphill. And it rolls to every single member of this board that these things don't happen. And there may be wonderful reasons why these things were delayed, but we need to do better with communicating. Because the residents are paying for these things. And they're paying a high price because of our delays. And they are justifiably annoyed because not only are we delayed, but we don't have the use of Camp Gleason. We don't have the full use of the library with the addition, which would open that whole area up. We don't have use of the green spaces around the fire station or, you know, people are excited. So I just want you to be mindful of that. That's why my blood pressure's a little elevated at the moment, but.
All right, does anyone else?
Yeah, um, did you have a question? On irrigation?
I do.
Go ahead with your irrigation question, because I have a drainage question.
Well, so you go right ahead.
Okay, so, um, I know the drainage portion of this is to, um, help with standing water on the golf course and get the carts out and everything. However, um, a few months ago, we had someone in here, I know drainage off the golf course to that street that is below is also a really big problem. And we had people in here a few months ago where the, the drainage in front of their houses, it collapsed. Is this going to, um, help with, with that issue? Is there a way we can run drainage off into another area? Or so it's not directly impacting the residents right below the golf course? I'm sorry, I can't think of the name of that street.
Meadow Brook?
Yeah, okay.
So, um, through the chair, I apologize. So we do, so, um, the drainage off the golf course, the majority of it, actually goes into, um, a detention basin that was constructed through a grant, of which I don't remember the name, but it was a hazard mitigation grant. So, it goes through, goes into the, the, uh, the basin. It goes through an outlet control structure to limit the amount of flow that's going down that pipe. Um, in addition to that, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we do have, um, the drainage improvement project. And that is, um, and that's part of it. So Meadow Brook Road and then, um, the off-site drainage that, I believe I mentioned at the last meeting, I'm getting my meetings confused, but, um, that port, the off-road, um, drainage project is actually right against the, the golf course in that area.
Okay, thank you.
So I think, yes, I had a, questions, first of which is it's an enterprise fund. So, to me, I've been told many times that ROI isn't something you can necessarily calculate in government, but you certainly can in an enterprise fund in a golf course world. And understanding that this borrowing is coming, um, or we're gonna authorize that with 500,000 in there, what is our lost time because of these issues that we're not solving? When it rains, yes, carts can't go out. Does it delay it three days? Is that, how much revenue are we potentially losing in that? So like the opportunity costs, wanna understand that aspect of it. And again, it will get paid through there and knowing where we are competitively on a rate, where is that limit? If, if fees go up by $5, do we lose the, I believe you said 300-plus rounds a day?
On the, on the weekend, it goes up to 300 rounds, yes.
Okay, so, understanding like the impact of that and knowing, again, this is an activity that people who have additional funds might be doing. And if they're being hit hard in the wallet, is, what does that look like? Are they gonna drop that? And there might be things beyond our control that are gonna limit the amount of people using the golf course daily. So, I, I think understanding the ROI on this is critical for anyone who wants to do it. I understand the timelines and, um, certainly I, I use the golf course. So I, I'd love to, but at the same time, if you're gonna charge me X number of dollars more, you know what, maybe I won't go out for five days after it's raining. There's, there's more to an enterprise fund than typical government aspects, so.
Before you answer, can I ask about the golf cart paths that we authorized, I believe it was a year ago? Or was it in the, in the past, was it in the annual town meeting? Didn't we authorize payments for golf court paths, right?
That was part of the bunkers.
Bunker replacement.
Bunker, yeah. So we have, um, we have the documents ready to go out. I think there, there's some, um, additional.
I guess Greg sent the bid out. It's out to bid right now and we're having a pre-bid meeting on Wednesday of this week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Every once in a while, I.
So that will certainly help issues when it comes to drainage, because carts can go, still go out if we've got some paths. It'll, it's not gonna improve it completely, but it'll.
No, it's not, it's not gonna improve it completely.
It will assist it.
To, to improve it completely, you really have to do the entire project. Because if we were just to do the first two holes, the other holes are still wet. So, in order to do this properly, the entire golf course should be done at one time.
Yep.
Go ahead.
I just have one other question. So putting on my sort of conservationist and sustainability hat, golf courses, a huge water sucks. Uh, there's a ton of water that you use to, to, to irrigate and keep everything nice and green for the golfers. Did your consultant or, or are you aware of any type of program where you are actually recycling the water through the retention base, put it back through the irrigation system, back into the retention base, back to the irrigation system? So you're, you're sort of recircling, you know, the same water and not drawing off of?
Just to let you know, we do not irrigate the entire golf course. We only irrigate tees and greens. We don't have enough water to do that. There are systems out there that use gray water. I just don't know that we would have the ability to do that at Pecatrog.
So it's not something that?
Like a lot of resorts will do that. They'll use the gray water from the hotels and they'll, they'll use that to irrigate their golf courses.
Um, okay, I just have a couple of questions or comments. My understanding is that the irrigation is all done with well water, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's not, you're not paying for the water, so to speak, right? And what, Mr. Karen, what is the best, I hate to see retained earnings depleted, especially if we're gonna start borrowing a lot of money. What is the best balance to leave in retained earnings to, to cover the, the golf course? If they have a slow year or if there are any issues? Well, the, the retained earnings, I'm estimating to be at 1.5 million. Yep. The debt would be an annual amount of 145,000. If we go with the, with the level debt. So the golf course has actually had very good, um, it's, it's had very good, um, operations over the last several years. The revenues over the expenses, just to give you an idea, is estimated at, um, for 25, 580,000. 24 was 325, 23 was 395. So I think from what we're seeing in the operations, that the debt can become part of the budget without increasing the fees. Okay, and, um, and basically what you're saying is that's the, the amount that the golf course made that year, right? So fiscal 25 was 580,000 dollars. That would be the profit. Correct. Okay. And you're talking about, uh, borrowing with a level debt for what term? 20? For 20 years. Okay. And is it possible to do, I mean, I mean, you're borrowing for one project now, but is the plan to do the irrigation system improvements and the drainage system improvements at the same time?
I think that the, the coordination would be that the, the drainage would come first just because of, we're, we're anticipating some delays in the, um, in the irrigation.
So would it make more sense to say, um, to maybe, um, well, I take back what I was gonna say, forget it. So the drainage would come first, okay?
Given the timeframe they've given us for a vendor, um, I don't, I don't know what's changed in a year either. I mean, things could've changed and, and also the other thing is typically you do, um, your drainage in the fall when it's dry and the irrigation in the spring when it's wet. But if you opt to do it in the summertime and close down holes as, you might get, you might get a vendor right away. Because most golf courses wanna do these projects either in the spring or the fall. So, but as far as which, which comes first, I would do whatever we could get. And if we get the drainage done first, that would just increase our revenue.
Okay, so since we're talking about not, um, talking about these projects taking a while because we're gonna have to get vendors and things like that, and we wanna have that authorization to borrow in place so that we can get a vendor, it, it's possible our retained earnings could increase enough that we wouldn't have to borrow. Would that, could that be a, a plan also? In other words, if we have an authorization to borrow 2 million, but maybe we're only gonna have to borrow 1.5 million, because we can take, there'll be enough money in retained earnings to pay some of the cost upfront. Is that a possibility? I, I would never recommend using the full amount of the retained earnings. So like right here, if we're, if we're saying it's gonna be certified at 1.5, we're using 500,000, which would leave us around a million. We probably could use some of that. But I would think we'd wanna leave maybe like half a million dollars in there. Yeah, oh no, I absolutely agree with that. And I actually, I used to hear that we should leave 750,000 in there. So, um, even in a higher amount, so I'm wondering if 500,000 might be too low. Especially if we're gonna start doing improvement plans that might impact the number of golfers that we have coming, so might reduce our revenue. But anyway, okay. Yes?
Through the chair, um, just to clarify, if we do the drainage first, it's, it can be, we'll all, we'll still go out to bid for the irrigation. And if there's a delay, then maybe we can get the drainage done first. It's not like we're gonna do the drainage and wait. We are ready to move on these projects. So just to clarify that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And also, if I may add, the, the irrigation also includes upgrading the power, which involves National Grid. And I know that they say there's a delay with that too. I don't know what that is.
I have one more question. I know we've probably beaten this to death, but are there any other rehabilitation, any other work that needs to be done in the near future that you anticipate?
Well, we've also hired a golf course architect to draw a master plan to do different projects. We, we have tees that need to be leveled. We'd like to do more bunkers, uh, put more sand in our bunkers. So there are going to be ongoing projects that we'll be coming back for. But we just, we wanna space it out, but the, the irrigation and drainage is probably the top priority right now.
Do you anticipate those kind of improvements to be capital improvements or those smaller dollars that you could potentially use some retained earnings to get done?
Well, we, we have the plan, the plan's been drawn up. We, we really haven't had a chance to sit down and discuss how we were gonna handle this, the improvements. We haven't met with the committee yet to see if they even wanna do these improvements. But we do know that they, they need to be done. We need more cart paths, uh, because we're getting so busy and carts are a big, everybody wants a golf cart. And they're, even though it's 60 acres, everybody's driving two or tee and two or green. So when they get to that approach area, they're just worn right down. And we've tried using stone dust. It just, it's, it's more work for the staff to maintain that than it would be just to pave it.
It would be nice to hear more about that and strategies in the near term so that we can, you know, again, people are interested in these things and if you're asking for a borrowing now, they're gonna be wondering what, where's the next shoe gonna drop? And I don't mean that in a judgmental way. It's just, you know, they're concerned about a lot of different things. So it would be great to try and get some of those things moving so that they can be communicated to the public. You can have some meetings and people can understand, um, you know, what's involved in having a municipal golf course. It's, it's quite involved and I'm glad that we're seeing a return to the golf course. I've only heard good things, positive things about how it's being run. So, kudos to you and your team for doing that and seeing the results pay off.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I'm gonna make a motion that we recommend approval on Warren Article 20.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, uh, recommend approval on Article 20. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No?
Me.
Opposed?
Yep.
So we have a 4-1.
I feel we need more information. This is, it seems to be pretty consistent. I'm not against the project, but I do feel we just asked a bunch of questions, left it open-ended, and we don't have answers.
Right, so Article 21, to see if the town meeting will vote to repurpose the following unexpended CIP funds. I'm not gonna read the amounts. I'm just gonna read the accounts they're coming from and then the total. The counts, and we're talking about unexpended CIP funds in Auburn Street Design, Police Station Roof, Auburn Middle School Feasibility Study, High School Land Acquisition, High School Construction, High School Land Acquisition and LED Street Lights. And that totals 150,000 dollars. And to appropriate said unexpended funds to procure engineering services for the design of the water street culvert replacement or act on anything relative thereto. Questions?
Madam Chair. Are these funds for projects that have already been completed? And are just balances left over that were either waiting to be returned to the taxpayer or utilized for other purposes? Or are we not doing certain projects to advance this?
I, I think we bought all the land for the high school, right?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm specifically talking about the Police Station Roof, um, the LED Street Lights. I understand the, you know, the high school as well as the Auburn Street Design is long since done.
Right.
But, you know, specifically, you know, the LED Street Lights or the Police Station Roof specifically, are these just leftover balances from past projects?
Police Station Roof, through, through the chair. Police Station Roof, I checked with the police chief and he said that they had it looked at and inspected. And the roof is in good shape at this point, so they don't need those funds. The LED Street Lights, that project has been completed. We received some rebates back, plus there was some bonding proceeds that were remaining. And the rest of the projects have been completed. And I also did approach the, um, our financial advisor, made sure that the lifespan of this coordinates well with the project that we're transferring it to, and we got a green light on that. May I ask, are you saying that because these were borrowed funds? So we need to spend, and we need to spend them within a certain amount of time? I thought we have to spend them within a certain amount of time. But if there are leftover funds, you have to put, put the proceeds or repurpose them to a comparable project for the, the same life term or similar. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? In that we just had the, um, high school before us asking for money because of some damage. Why wouldn't the, these monies, which is 50-odd thousand dollars, go towards maintenance of the high school? Because these funds were directly related to the construction of the project. Land acquisition and, well, we have two land acquisitions. Why wouldn't we have used that to help repair what's happening with the canopy? Is it something to do with the canopy?
I mean, we can use those funds for that. We don't necessarily have to use it, you know, a school for a school or, or the town for the town. But the, the school had already come forward with a proposal for repurposing some of theirs.
I would just say, you know, again, putting on my hat as a town meeting member of old, they're gonna look at this and say, why, this is money directly borrowed or appropriated for the high school and it's being used for something not even a neighboring street. So, you know, if it was Walsh Ave, you know, somebody might say, "Oh, well, that makes sense. People are, you know, traversing that." If it was Auburn Street, those type of things. So, again, these are questions that are, you know, will bubble up in the public's mind. So, I'd rather ask them here so that you're prepared if somebody asks you in the future. Because to me, it would make more sense for us to take the 50-odd and put it towards the building that actually has the problem. And although we call it Swiss today, it was the junior high and middle school for many years. We have a problem. We have 17,000 dollars. Why wouldn't we put that towards remediating that issue? And then, again, we wouldn't be taking 150,000 dollars. We might have something else.
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna ask the same question where, you know, putting on my town meeting hat, I would've asked, you know, at town meeting, why aren't we using these high school funds for the high school roof? And using the high school leftover parking lot money for the Swiss parking lot so that we don't take money from their air quality improvements that we hope are gonna be covered by ARPA, but might run out of time. So I mean, those, those are just questions that I think that you're gonna wanna answer why you're choosing these funds and other funds.
Yeah.
And not sort of keeping everything together.
I mean, as a note, we're using high school funds to fix the high school. Like if we're looking at Article 4, we're already using excess high school funds to, to fix that issue.
But they're not really excess. And we also have Auburn Street Design, which is, you know, even though it barely faces Southbridge Street now, it still is 99 Auburn Street.
Um, if, if I may, I mean, if we were gonna close, if we weren't using these funds right now, repurposing them, am I correct in saying we would just close them out to the general fund?
You can't.
Oh, they're borrowed, okay.
If I can.
Yes, go ahead.
So, and maybe I misunderstood, but we met here and we talked about CIP. And we talked about repurposing and closing these accounts and getting them off the books. We can go back and forth on which one should be used for which, but the school is paying for their own. We are trying to close out these accounts. The key is that we can only do it, like Karen said, for like the length of term, like for projects that are the same length of term than what was borrowed. So. So, this was not done overnight or without a lot of thought. It was a lot of thought process to try to meet the needs of the board and also reduce some of these accounts. We shouldn't have all the capital accounts out there. And I'm sure there's maybe some others that we could've repurposed as well. But that was why we did it this way. And we tried to be a little bit more creative. And I do believe there's, I don't know if there's another one. But we tried to be more creative than going out and getting another borrowing and repurposing what we have and cleaning up those accounts.
Yeah, I mean, for, for my part, I'm supportive of this. I just, there, there's gonna come questions at town meetings, so you're just gonna wanna be able to answer why you're choosing these accounts versus the other accounts for the others. Because, because someone's gonna say, if you have high school money, you aren't using high school money. If you have Swiss money, you aren't using Swiss money. Are you sure the police roof is okay? Because we're worried about our public safety officers. So, I mean, you're just gonna wanna be able to answer those questions.
This is not coming from a, oh, wow, this is a bad idea. It's coming from, these are realistic and, I think, justifiable questions. We don't know if HVAC is gonna come in at what we think it is. Hope, but we, we can't afford to be working on hope. So, that's why I say, we had, with the Auburn Street Design, we had, you know, upwards of $75,000 that we could, we could've put to that purpose and saved as a, you know, potential reserve in case HVAC went back. You know, and there's one thing that I never, ever wanna hear is that the police station doesn't need anything of that building. Because lord knows that they may not need a roof today, but they're gonna need something in the near future. So, you know, using the 19-7 for that, for me, is, is because that building has so many issues. I wouldn't wanna see it used, but anyway. Food for thought going forward.
Okay, other questions?
I just wanna confirm. So, this is to fund the design contract that we discussed at our previous meeting for the Water Street culvert. Okay. So, there's no other questions. I'll recommend approval of warrant article 21.
I'll second.
We've got a mo-, a motion and a second to approve article 21, recommend article 21. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm gonna abstain.
Abstain. All right, article 22, to see if the town meeting will vote to approve the Water Street culvert replacement project totaling $1,500,000 and to raise said funds by borrowing payable in not more than the term provided by law and any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by the vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with chapter 44, section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount or act on anything relative thereto.
So, I noticed that the finance committee recommended, or did not, is recommending not, not recommended approval. Sorry, can't get, I'm starting to lose timeline on my, uh. In terms of, in going back to our previous conversation about allocating money and sitting on it, we do not have the design ready in this case. My understanding, if I'm remembering right from our past meeting, was that this design is likely not to be ready for a year or can, or not ready to be constructed for a year. So, why, if we don't have a design, we don't know the true cost, why aren't we waiting until May to do this borrowing when we should have a better idea of what the design looks like and what the actual cost of that is going to be? Because I know that at the last meeting, I asked that you consider sliplining or some other, and you said that's gonna be a conversation with the consultant. So, we don't know what the cost is gonna be. Why are we doing this now and not waiting until May?
So, when, through the chair, when I had, had that conversation with Mass D E P, I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of what we were looking at for potential costs and for, for the, the design and for the construction, as well as if we were to get a, a, a design, then we would be ready to award the contract. I didn't have that timeline at the time that I submitted the warrant article. Based on what I found out subsequent to that, I, I, I would like to be hopeful, but I would feel comfortable that, you know, we're probably not gonna be ready before May to award the contract. So, I would be comfortable with postponing this article until, to a later time.
So, given that, I'm gonna, to, to join the finance committee, I'll make a motion that we recommend not approving this and urge the DPW director to withdraw it on the floor of town meeting.
Would we just defer to the petitioner at that point, or?
I, I, I think we should be clear that we should not be doing this because, again, that whole conversation we had about timelines and being responsive, I think we need to be clear that we, we're recommending that we don't approve this at this point.
We have a motion and a second to not recommend approval on article 22. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
I'll just ask the chair, when we report out at town meeting, in addition to saying that we're not recommending, our recommendation is that we're asking the DPW director to postpone this till the May town, town meeting. And it's not a reflection on our support or non-support for the project. Just so that it's, it's clear that this is just because where we are in the process. And we can explain, you know, the whole design thing.
Yep.
Article 23, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $40,000 from free cash towards the replacement of a groundwater monitoring well, environmental testing, and solid waste advisory services at the former landfill or act on anything relative thereto.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yep.
We capped this when I was in grammar school. When will the monitoring costs end for this project? Because, I mean, I think at some point-
I don't know if it ever does.
What's that?
I'm not sure if it ever does.
I don't think it does either.
Really? So, if we ever wanted to do something on that property, we would have to be mindful of, you know, decades of trash. I don't even remember how long it was open. But, I mean, it closed when I was a child. So, it, it would seem to me at some point, you have to say, why are we keep spending money monitoring something? Have we identified any hazards to groundwater, to drinking water?
I'm, I'm not aware of anything, any negative test results. But we are required by Mass D E P to keep monitoring and providing those results to them.
If you, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. If we ever wanted to build on that site, we would have to go through remediation to cap it. There's a special sleeve you have to put over it in order to construct upon it. And there's certain uses that are allowed and not allowed. But to my knowledge, you're monitoring this in perpetuity.
Yeah, like she's-
Talking to our legislators about this, that's ridiculous. I mean, literally, this dump ended, I wasn't 10 years old. I'm now 52. I, I think if we haven't found any problems in 40-plus years, I think D E P should follow the reasonableness standard that we hear so much about and say, come on. Because that's a lot of money to, and if we've had consistently no issues, why are we doing this? What is the exercise for? Obviously, I know you cannot answer because you're not requiring it. But it's something that perhaps we should talk to our legislators about because it seems excessive. If we have no findings after 40-plus years, like, we should be not required to do that. Do it at a less frequent. Bless you.
Thank you. Do you hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recommend approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Article 24, to see if the town meeting will vote to repurpose CIP funds by amending article four of the May 6, 2025 annual town meeting, catch basin truck as follows. Authorize $65,000 to be used for the repair of 2014 International 7,006-wheel Dump/Sand Plow #45 or act on anything relative thereto. Do you wanna tell us about it?
Sure. So, we received a quote to repair this vehicle. We need this vehicle for snow and ice operations. It has a motor that needs to be replaced. And, and it is a lot of money, unfortunately. Our next vehicle isn't gonna be coming until after, after the, the winter. And we're, we're in a spot where this vehicle is expected to last us at least, you know, at least five, eight years. And it's our best vehicle, aside from the obvious motor issue. At this point, we take, it takes about two years to order a vehicle. So, we need to fix the ones that we have.
Madam Chair, if I may ask a couple of questions.
Yep.
Does this mean we're not purchasing, was this money originally to purchase a brand-new catch basin truck?
Correct.
And do we have existing catch basin trucks?
We do.
And they're operating?
So, we have a catch basin truck. It does, it, it is relatively old.
Bless you.
It is, I'm not sure of the year, but it was evaluated by our mechanic. He is absolutely against getting rid of it because he thinks, he, you know, he believes that it's gonna last us a long time and we're gonna be looking to reappropriate the remaining money for the CIP, for the catch basin truck. So, because we're not gonna need to purchase it.
Okay. So, because I, I believe our, our cleaning of the catch basins is tied to our MS4 permit.
Correct.
And so, we're able to meet the requirements of that with the existing, the existing trucks without having to purchase a new one?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask, you only use it, you don't use it a lot. I mean, wouldn't you be able to rent a vehicle in case the catch basin truck went, went down or out of service?
So, we've looked into that. And I think because all the municipalities are in the same boat that we need to clean these basins on a regular basis. I, I don't think that it would be, I don't think it would be feasible. We could probably outsource it and have a company do it, just at a much greater cost.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Questions?
Yep, I have a question. So, I know this was asked of finance, but I'm gonna ask it here again because it is rather unusual to use capital funds for an operational expense. So, what is the rationale for that? So, this isn't leftover CIP money. Am I hearing that correctly? Because clearly tonight, I wasn't following certain things.
I'm sorry, I didn't, this is leftovers?
So, is the money that we're appropriating leftover CIP? Or it's, you were anticipating purchasing this and you're not going to purchase it?
Correct. I was anticipating purchasing a new vehicle based on some, a recommendation from a, our previous mechanic. And our mechanic now is very comfortable with saying that he can, he can-
Spend its life.
Yes. Thank you.
But it is capital funds, and we're using it for an operational expense. So, again, I, I think you're gonna get a lot of questions about this. And I have a question about it because I, I don't think we should be doing that. We should be finding this money. We should be repurposing money. If we have these accounts, as the manager says, we should be taking that money and not using operational, we shouldn't be mixing the two functions, I guess, is my point. But-
Well, through the chair, if I could. These actual funds that were in the May of 2025 annual town meeting that were authorized, that weren't authorized to be borrowed, they were tax levy funds. And while I understand what you're saying about the operational versus the capital, this would be a, an improvement that would last over several years and over the dollar amount that actually is over the threshold that would be considered capital.
But at eight years, you're two years shy of the 10 years that you need.
Three years is considered capital.
Only three now?
Three years, $10,000.
Can, can I just piggyback on that and ask a question? Did we consider use of free cash to repair the dump Sand Plow #45 so that we could restore that before the winter? Make sure it's operating? And still use the appropriated money to purchase the catch basin truck? So that DPW is receiving the benefit of both vehicles that I think we've intended them to have?
Through the chair, we did have several discussions about that. And we have, obviously, you've seen our free cash requests already. So, we were looking into the best way to pay for this expense. And because we don't need the catch basin truck repair the way it was anticipated back in May when we had a, a previous person look at it, we thought the best way would be to reappropriate it because we don't need that anymore at that level. So, it was, to us, it, it made sense. It's, again, DPW, again, it's a truck. So, we're trying to keep it in the same area versus tap into any more free cash. And it, and it's tax levy.
Do I hear a motion?
I would like to hold it and think about this a little further. If people are willing to do so. If they're not, I can abstain, but-
I'm, I'm willing to hold it tonight because I'm inclined, and this is gonna be a preview of a later agenda item. I'd be inclined not to support this because I think we are taking too much from DPW time and time again. And I think we need to start focusing on providing DPW the resources they need to provide the level of service and upkeep our infrastructure that I don't think is happening right now. And I think that's the biggest complaint that I get from residents. So, I would not support, you know, stealing from Peter to pay Paul in DPW. I'd rather use free cash, which we seem to be spending on other, other avenues to make DPW whole with both vehicles.
It's up to the rest of the-
We need a motion?
I'd ask that we hold it.
Do I hear a motion that we will make a recommendation at a later date?
Seconded.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second. Sorry, I thought Steve had made the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Article 25, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 114, Section 34, we seek the town of Auburn inhabitants' vote to authorize the establishment of a new private cemetery to be located at Zero Cemetery Road on the site of an undisclosed, unauthorized, now abandoned landfill. And et cetera. Funding as this is a private cemetery, and as, as is presented in the warrant, funding as this is a private cemetery, there is no cost to the taxpayers of Auburn. Approvals have been obtained from the Auburn Planning Board, the Auburn Conservation Commission, the Auburn Zoning Board, the Auburn DPW. Approval from the Auburn Board of Health is ongoing and is expected before the fall special town meeting. This is a citizens petition.
So, can I just ask a couple of questions? I'm not sure if it's Director Coyle or, or Dr. Menard. This was held last time because they had a, they hadn't received all of their approvals. Does it look like they will have all of their approvals in hand by town meeting?
Thank you very much for the question. So, yes, at the time the, that the warrant articles were submitted, the review process with the Board of Health was still happening. So, that's why it's written that way. The Board of Health had a public hearing a couple of weeks ago. And we went through the review process. And the Board of Health has, has issued approval. So, the, the paperwork and the plans and so forth, we're finalizing all the details. But we should have a, a written approval for the petitioner.
So, so whenever this is presented to town meeting, I think it's gonna be important that we explain that they have all their approvals in hand now. And if I remember right, from when I attended some of the ZBA meetings for Perry Place, this was also on one or two of the agendas. And they had, they're, they're essentially cleaning up. They're paying to clean up what is, I think, an illegal landfill or dump. So, they're actually doing a service for the community that is saving us from having to do it. So, I'm inclined to recommend approval, knowing they have all permits in hand and all approvals in hand, and they are providing, you know, a true service to the community, separate of the cemetery. the cemetery.
Quick question. The Board of Health had a consultant, correct, who went through this project and this went through, I know there were some questions about the sensitivity of how the faith-based group was burying their burial rights essentially. And can you just give a brief overview of how this is, you know, was improved and what recommendations the consultant that your board contracted with came up with?
Sure. So this, um, uh, as, as been stated, um, it is a, um, area of, um, land that was, um, had a old landfill back from, I want to say the 60s, 70s. So it was a landfill, illegal landfill for many, many years. The town, um, didn't have knowledge of it, um, until actually we went out to do site testing. At that time, the, um, the property owner had to con, contract with a licensed site professional to address the concerns that were there. So he hired a professional, um, to start that process. And that was ongoing for the past several years. So, um, this plan, um, although this warrant article is for the approval of the cemetery, there's actually the approval of the cemetery project, but, um, parallel to that is that landfill getting capped. So, um, it is going to be a beneficial use for that parcel. And because of the, the two, I'm going to say, parallel, um, proposals that are happening, the town did hire our own, um, licensed site professional and professional engineer. And they are familiar with the town. It's actually the same consultant, Sanborn Head, that we utilize for, um, the, uh, the town's own landfill. So it's a, um, a consultant that we have confidence in. They were, um, extremely helpful, um, providing advisement to, um, to the Board of Health and, uh, came up with recommendations to handle, um, how we move forward. So those, um, recommendations, um, include, um, working with the DEP requirements for the actual landfill. So there is, um, uh, something similar that you mentioned earlier. There is certain amount of, um, uh, testing of, um, monitoring wells and so forth. That part is incorporated into, um, the approval. And then to your point about this proposed cemetery was originally proposed as a green cemetery, um, where, um, there's certain practices that require the green cemetery to have, um, the, uh, contact of the body with the actual earth. There's a certain, um, way that they have to, um, face the sun. So there's certain religious, um, rites that are followed. However, um, knowing that there were, uh, private wells in the area, um, and having enough setback distances, um, there were, um, there were, uh, discussion items with the property owner and they did come to the table and make some changes that would work for both their, um, religious beliefs and also satisfying the protections that we needed for the private wells in the area. So, um, it really has been, um, it's been a, a long thoughtful process and we feel that, um, our town consultant has helped us tremendously to get to this point. So, um, hopefully that answers all of your questions.
One last, were, were there any objections from any of butters? I didn't notice anybody at the public hearing and I didn't hear any objections raised, but I just wanted to ask so that's out in the public record.
Sure. For the, uh, I, I can speak for the Board of Health, um, hearing and we did not have any objections. I think we had, um, a comment from, um, one of the utility companies, um, to identify where the proposed project was. Because in that area of town, there's, um, uh, there's easements for the utility lines. So there was a inquiry about that and we provided information. But, um, for the Board of Health hearing, um, we did not have any objections.
Motion we recommend?
Second.
Right, so a motion and a second to recommend, um, article number-
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, recommend. Last article, number 26. I moved that, the town meeting vote to accept Whitman Bailey Drive in its entirety as a public way as shown on the plan prepared by Leonard Engineering, Inc., entitled Windmill Estates, dated April 8th, 2015 and recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds Plan Book, uh, 56992, page 159, 139, containing 53 pages. The length of Whitman Bailey Drive would be approximately 960 feet by a citizen's petition.
I have-
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, I have a, I watched the planning board meeting and if I remember correctly, I was on the planning board the last time this came, uh, to us. And it seems like, and, and, you know, I would look to Dr. Menard and Director Pickwin to confirm this. Based on, one, the planning committee had a discussion, but they did not have a public hearing. And during that discussion, what came out appeared that the road is not built to, um, to the standards that are in our, uh, 2015 subdivision guide. The petitioner who was there representing them was not, was aware that it wasn't built to code, but thought because the total number of, it didn't have, it had, I think it didn't have a 12-inch base, a two and a half binder and one and a half top. It had some different configurations. She was under the impression that that was fine. And I just want to confirm that we want the street built to those bases. And if that can be or has been communicated to the petitioners to date.
It's been, it was communicated to them a couple of years ago and they're all aware of what our expectations are. There are other issues, several issues aside from how it was built, but-
The other issue is, my understanding is that, um, at the end, uh, it's a dead-end road and that the way that they've constructed it, a ladder truck is not able to go down, make the turn and come back out.
That, that, that's-
Another issue.
The chief did go down there and he can't get access with his fire truck. So that is, he did do that recently, so that, that's okay.
Okay, so, so he was able to get through with the ladder truck the way it is now?
Yeah.
Okay. The other concern is that, am I correct in saying that there's a culvert underneath where the street meets Prospect? Uh, there's a culvert underneath that right now the residents of that street own and have to maintain. And if this was accepted, we're not only accepting the street, but we're accepting maintenance of it and upkeep of the culvert. Is that correct?
Correct. So, um, it would be on my understanding that we would be, we would be taking over not only the street, but also the, the drainage infrastructure in a typical subdivision. And I think that back at that time, um, we would require funding for the upkeep of the detention basin that, you know, because this was going to be a private development that was never done as well.
Are they aware of, one, all of these deficiencies, but two, that if the town were to accept it, we would be looking for funds from them to fix what's wrong and to maintain it? Because it seems like from the conversation that took place at the planning board, the residents, it's a 55-plus community, um, when they bought it, some thought they were buying a public way, some knew they were buying a private way. They've realized that they don't have the capability or means to maintain a, a road and a culvert and they're looking basically to, uh, have it be a public way so that, that it's the responsibility of the town now and not, and not them. Are they aware that we would be looking for those excess funds from them above their tax payments, which is what they kept relying on?
Don't believe that item has come up to date, having them pay those, those funds.
So they're, are you saying that, I'm sorry, are you saying they're not aware of that?
Not of that item, I don't think that's been discussed.
I will say, he, um, the citizen has been before the board, I don't know if it was this full board, but before the board before, and I do believe we made it pretty clear that they would have to bring it up to code before we could accept it. And I don't know if he thinks this is a, a way around that.
So though, although he submitted this, um, I don't know the, the resident's name. It was a, a new resident who was taking the lead, um, for their HOA. It wasn't, I, I don't think it's this gentleman that actually submitted the petition. He wasn't the one that attended and was answering questions.
I've spoken to two or three different residents of that community. This John Hedley has been doing the petition, someone else was at the planning board meeting the other day. And I believe there was somebody you're referencing, I don't recall his name, has also been involved.
There was also a lot of confusion at that meeting. It seemed that the resident who was coming and, and leading the thing did not have a lot of the information, did not have, she was referencing conversations that they had with, with the director that seemed, made it seem like it was okay. And I know, uh, Chairman Regan and other members of the planning board were pushing back pretty hard on, on the fact that, no, it's, you know, not built up to standard, not built up to code. And, um, you know, I would just ask that maybe it need, there needs to be organized by the town manager, a meeting with them to understand, here's all the issues, here's everything the town would be looking for if we were to take over this road. And, you know, maybe it's something where they say, okay, never mind, or they say, yes, we want to push forward and support that.
I have begun preparing our, um, updated response to what they have given the planning board as to what they think is acceptable and what they think they've done. So I'm working on that, I'll be ready. There'll be a public hea, the public hearing for this will be on October 14th, so that'll be done on the next week.
When is, when is it going to be? When is the public hearing?
October 14th.
Thinking there should be, I, I would ask that the administration consider a meeting with them in advance of even that public hearing to make sure they have all the information and it doesn't become a, uh, a contentious issue before the planning board where the planning board's put in the position where they have to explain all of this stuff, that it can be explained in advance.
Through the chair, um, I, uh, Mr. Heedy, I think, um, he had reached out to me recently and we, I think we, we were planning on meeting this Friday, um, to discuss these issues. There might be a conflict, so we're looking to schedule that meeting, um, for, to discuss the, the DPW portion of it.
It, it might be a good idea to, I know you've done this and a couple of other issues that we've had with developers or, or to have everybody in the room, fire, police, DPW, planning, building inspector, and say, here's all the issues and get it all out.
Absolutely.
I do, I do have questions and thank you for answering my questions earlier today. Anybody who lives in that neighborhood should be afraid that an HOA is responsible for that level of, I mean, the fact that they actually got an approval at any time is disturbing because who in their right mind would expect citizens? And even, even if you take it that 10 of them were developers or had, you can't count on that level of expertise for decades. Is there any way that we can work through our own bylaws to ensure that this does not happen again? Because these residents rightly, wrongly are, are pursuing this process. But honestly, we can talk about the buyer beware, but, you know, you don't know, none of us can know what they were told. But honestly, as a government organization, if there's something that we can do to prevent this type of development to be built in the future, we should be doing that because that is insane to expect people to, to have responsibility for that. I mean, it, it just goes beyond what an HOA should be expected to do. So, um, but absolutely, I agree with Mr. Crane. They do need to understand that, you know, I, I've heard them mention Booth Road. Booth Road was part of Hilltop Farm Estates. I was on the planning board when we approved it. If that road was not built to town standards, that wasn't because that's how the planning board approved it. That was because of something that happened between approval, the necessary inspections that may or may not have happened. But, you know, you can talk about Kelly Street. Kelly Street has been in existence since the cart, the carts were here. Whitman Bailey Road is within 10 years. No waiver should be given for any road with or sidewalks because this is what happens. You get people telling them, the developer who takes his money and, and runs and says, oh, you'll be fine. But from a town perspective, we have to protect ourselves because 99% of the time, like Old Cot Road, sat there for 30 years, one house, a friggin' year. 30 years later, the developer says, I'm not doing anything. And then the town is responsible. So as you advise our boards and commissions, please make it clear that, no, if you're developing in town, it has to meet subdivision standards or you don't get to build. That is a waiver that should not be issued. Sidewalks, pavement, and then 10 years after they come in and the road starts, you know, going to hell, at least we have something and we're not sitting here having to ask the DPW director to go out there and do a core of a friggin' road. You know, it's just, this is preventable and, you know, it's unfortunate that it got approved, but if there's anything that we can do bylaw-wise, sooner rather than later, I would like to see professional staff draft it and get, let's get it on the books because this should never have happened. You know, and it's, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying it's, you know, it's insanity to expect residents who might not even know where their shut-off switch is, to be responsible of sewage, on top of the fact that they're surrounded by an existing neighborhood. If those systems fail, who's going to pay for it? The residents who live there, not just Whitman Bailey Drive, but the people who've lived on Prospect Street. And we might end up with some god-awful environmental problem that, you know, now we'll spend another 50 years getting, you know, monitoring. I feel for the residents because I feel like they paid an awful lot of money to live in this neighborhood. And now they're being asked to become, you know, experts at some, you know. It's unrealistic and is dangerous for them as residents and dangerous for the neighborhood that they are in. So from a liability standpoint, you know, it's, it's troubling. So I would make a motion that we not recommend approval for this because there is, I don't think, you know, they can ask town meeting to continue to, you know, may. Hopefully they'll have what they need, but I don't think we should recommend it because it's not suitable for a public road and it's very different than any other road that we've asked town meeting, at least that I can recall.
Second.
Okay, for discussion, please, I still have some questions. In what way is the road not sufficient?
There were several waivers given. The road length is longer than normal.
Longer than normal? You mean wider?
Longer, instead of 100 feet.
It has a certain length.
For a culvert.
For a culvert side.
Okay.
Sidewalks, they only have it on one side. They do not have granite curbs. In all the places, you normally have granite curbs. Yeah, they adequate cobber arms in places and the pavement thickness is not what is standard.
And what is the width of the road?
Sorry?
What is the width of the road?
If I can read these plans.
I believe it was, it is about 24 feet. So the width is consistent.
Adequate, potentially. Adequate, potentially, but the width needs to meet, because again, we have emergencies, we have everything else, people need to be able to get out while the other people are running in, so, you know, 24 feet should be 26 to me, but people change things when they leave, so, but yeah, I would recommend that we not, because this, it just isn't suitable for a public road right now, and I feel for the residents, but there's work to be done, I think staff is prepared to help them through the process, because again, it's a kind of a weird process that I couldn't explain it if I had to, and I certainly wouldn't want to have to take responsibility for actually carrying it out, so whatever you can do to help them through the process, I'd appreciate it, but that's my motion, that we not recommend this.
So we have a motion and a second to not recommend Article 26, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'm opposed.
I'm just going to abstain.
So 311. All right, going back to our agenda, we're looking at number 10, Town Manager Items, the request of the Town Manager for Border Selectment Budget Priorities for Fiscal Year 2027.
Thank you, through the chair, I wanted to have a discussion with the board, it can be tonight, or it can be at our next meeting, on what the board's budget priorities are for Fiscal Year 27, we are working on the CIP budget right now, and we'll be starting the operating budget very soon, and I would like to know if you could provide me priorities as you've done previous administrations.
I'll kick us off, if it's okay, Madam Chair, I've already got started on the Warren Articles, but my main priority, in the past, as both a town meeting member and a select board member, I've supported the fire department adding staff, adding needed infrastructure, I've supported the police with adding staff, adding needed infrastructure at the time, with their vehicles, et cetera, I think, the number one complaint that I hear from residents time and time again, and that I experienced myself, is our infrastructure, our upkeep, our roads, our sidewalks, we've now seen, you know, an issue with the Water Street culvert being shut, shutting down, you know, a roadway, or at least half a roadway, we, I know, you know, anyone that takes a walk and looks at some of our other dams and culverts, there's issues there, there does not seem to be, that I can find in the CIP, any planning for both monitoring, short-term maintenance, and long-term replacement of that, of those infrastructures, so I'd like to see that in the CIP, and then a combination of both, you know, I wish Superintendent Fairbanks was here, I can ask Director Paquin, but it, you know, in terms of the amount of employees the DPW has that works on the streets, the signs, the potholes, the pavement markings, taking care of the grounds, getting pulled away to do special projects at Camp Gleason, or at the park, or building, you know, something within the library to expand the children's room, those employees are getting pulled in every direction possible, they're also, you know, replacing the, you know, the sunken storm drains that aren't part of a larger project, and I don't think that there's been enough attention given towards DPW's budget when it comes to vehicles, equipment, we've not seen a consistent CIP item supporting them for that, it's been here or there, we've pulled money out of the roadways to support the treasurer's office, knowing that we're getting money from the state, but it'd be really great if we had our own money plus the state, you know, our roadway plan has gone from a 20-year plan, to a 40-year plan, to a 90-year plan, we need to get back to the 20-year plan, and we need to find a way to invest in our DPW, increase their manpower so that they can better provide the services, and if we can't increase their staffing levels, then we need to stop committing them to special projects that are better done by contractors, so that they can focus on the core values and their core services that our residents expect, and are complaining about because they're not getting, so DPW, DPW, DPW are my, are my focus.
Thank you.
Revival meeting, I couldn't agree more with Mr. Crane, I feel like we, a couple of things, so I know we had an issue with surveying, not having a stand, standing and advanced contract with a surveyor, I think we need to start looking at putting advanced contracts in place, so that when situations happen, because a culvert will fail, we can't wait two years, that is a major road in town, people think it's not used, it's used a lot, it's not necessarily by the residents, but it's a main way that people get from the east side of town to the west side of town, so it is not this underutilized road that some are suggesting it is, on top of the fact that we shouldn't be sending people, Meadow Road, or Street, whatever it is, is in terrible condition, it should, if we're going to detour people, we should be doing an overlay there, so that at least the pavement is smooth, there's a couple of, you know, catch basins that are, you know, finding their way, you know, gravity is taking hold, you know, these are the type of things that we need to address, and if we're going to be detouring people, I certainly don't want you getting calls 15 times a day, because somebody lost a tire in the catch basin, because the road on Meadow Street especially, in Shirley, Shirley, I think, they're very narrow streets, and how they line up is not great, so, you know, if we're going to start looking at these, you know, and detouring people, we should be looking at improving that road, so that the residents actually get a benefit, not just 200 extra cars going by their house, you know, so if you could look at that, but I agree with Mr. Crane, I think we've, we've come to a tipping point where it looks good on the balance sheet, but it doesn't look good on the real sheet, which is, you know, there's a lot of sidewalks, I've noticed even Mass DOT is not cutting back the growth, I mean, some sidewalks in town, you can't even walk on them, so then you're forcing people into streets, you know, which Hampton Street, I don't want anybody walking in the street, because the street is too narrow, it's too heavily traversed, somebody's going to get picked off, and there's a lot of feet of roads into Hampton Street, so it's not just you have to worry about the people on Hampton Street, you now got to worry about the people on Kimball trying to beat the light at Central Square, you got to worry about the other two streets, and of course you have, you know, the church right there, which is, you know, and Pappas Park, these are, these are huge volume generated, so I agree with you that we need to start looking at staffing at that department especially, and whether you have to hire some people, you know, some landscaping firms, again, advanced contracts, to do some of those things, you have a 50-acre parcel sitting at the bottom of South Old Road, I have not gone over there recently, but it used to be a forest, and it will become a forest very quickly if we don't maintain it, and I don't think we spent $3 million to have a forest over there, so we want to make sure, but we can't, you know, keep expecting the impossible out of the staff, I know the golf course requires a tremendous amount of their effort, this is an enterprise account, why aren't those costs being borne by the enterprise, instead of asking our regular staff to do that, that's why we have that money, so that that resource isn't pulling from other people, you know, we have, you know, if Mrs. Jacobson was here, she would tell you, we can't subsidize out of the trash account, because not everybody takes trash, well, not everybody golfs, so why are we subsidizing golfers, I want it to be, is a great asset, you've done a phenomenal job, the town has done a phenomenal job up there, I'm glad that it's back to a vibrant part of, you know, our community, but again, any other enterprise, that money should be captured within that, the full amount of the cost of that project should be borne by that enterprise, not by the taxpayers, and that is what's happening, because they don't have that staff, so you should be looking at that as well, to see how you can achieve, keep the golf course in the pristine condition it's in, but not subsidize it with tax dollars, and that can in turn free up money to hire people to do a lot of other things, but, you know, we ask a lot of our staff, and we do ask that they be perfect 100% of the time, and gosh, you know, they left that wrapper, you know, whatever, but, you know, we're very fortunate in the people that we have, most of them are very hardworking, and they're a credit to the organization, and I would like to see the public, you know, we all can complain, but it'd be nice if, you know, you get an attaboy every now and again, because I think, you know, you guys do deserve it, and, you know, from my perch up here, I see how hard you work, so, it doesn't go unnoticed by me, even sometimes when I lose my temper, but I do appreciate what you all do, and I know it's a difficult job, so thank you for that.
I agree with my fellow colleagues about DPW.
All right, here's the truth, keep the budget flat, how we get there, we can't support everything, but, no, ideally, I'd love that, obviously, we have a lot of services that we need, and we need to support a lot of services in greater depth than we have before, I think one of the things that I've always said, in addition to the roads, but technology, and what are we supporting technology-wise, that will, I think we heard it tonight, tracking, timing, follow-up, communication, what do we have in technology-wise that will get that information out to the residents, so we all know what's going on, not just if you attend the meetings, also the accountability aspect of that, too, transparency opens up some of that, sometimes it's just communication, obviously, we can't always get the services from outside, and we need to communicate that, but I think having the foresight to say, these are the contracts we're putting in place, so we have that readily available should something come up, one of the things, and I'm not positive on all the aspects, but I do hear, not just in the DPW world, but consultants hiring professionals from outside, I don't know if we can call that out in each group's budget, and find out what we're spending on outside assistance, and is that the best use, I mean, sometimes the expertise is absolutely needed, but if we find out, we could actually hire somebody in-house to do that at a different cost, I don't know if it's called out on everything, I do know we're $150,000 for engineering on something, I believe we have three town engineers, is a fourth one needed, and would that free up some time, I don't necessarily want to dedicate all the staff to project-related work, but I think we need to know what that number is, and whether a line item for each group is called out for outside consulting, or some sort of fees, we can have that knowledge where we can assess, maybe we are overworked, or, you know, would be better utilized, because we can control that more than we can control the contractors, so technology's huge, besides, you know, roadways, I'd love to see what we're doing in that avenue, and where we're gaining efficiencies on that, I'd like to also continue to see where we stand on the CIP and the outstanding or previous projects, I appreciate that you have brought projects forward, I know it's concerning that the money's out there for decades, so hopefully that doesn't happen again, but also understanding and maybe a little bit more knowledge, and, and some of those, I think I'm getting off track for budget priorities, sorry, I'd love to try to be as flat as possible, and that's while achieving those things, but other things are going to have to suffer, I don't know exactly what those are, I know we have a little bit of reprieve with some of the grants that we've received for the fire department, but in three years, we're going to be on the hook for a lot of that money, so if we're not planning for that now, we're going to get hit really hard in that first year especially, I believe the police department also has had a few new hires, or has some grants that will be on the books, but we need to understand what that looks like, and what services are underutilized, or not as required, but again, the priorities, I think, are roadways, and my mind, technology to make us more efficient in the future.
When I say DPW, I mean, you know, they have the phenomenal, you know, building program that they have, I mean, it makes sense, if you have, and I can only imagine what kind of projects have been neglected over the years, just because you can't get to them, you know, looking to grow that aspect of DPW as well, because again, there's a lot of cost savings, and to your point, Mr. Chambers, it's, we have the ability to schedule them, and obviously can't do it for everything, that's where you do the advanced contracts, just so that when problems come up, you're already prepared for success, but we do have to make hay where the sun shines, because we are looking at, you know, it's great that the safer grant got approved, but there's an end of the rainbow, and we got to figure out how we can pay for that, and if we have some slack now to help out, but we got to keep an eye on that, too, as to what's the best strategy.
And, you know, I support everything my fellow colleagues have said, but I want to be very clear, when I'm talking about DPW, I'm not talking about extra engineers, I think, you know, we have an assistant town engineer who has a foundation in stormwater, we have an assistant town engineer that has a foundation in civil engineering, and construction management, we have Director Paquin, who is a, you know, a professional engineer, we're hiring a fourth engineer, I assume, to take Nick's former place, so we'll have four engineers, I'm talking about the frontline crews that are out there mowing the lawns, hanging the signs, painting the roads, you know, taking care of the parks, building the, you know, Camp Gleason, building, you know, the library addition, those frontline, you know, fixing the potholes, plowing the streets, doing those core hands-on services, the frontline people, just like when I talked about, or when we support staff for the, you know, for the police department, we weren't talking about extra lieutenants, as much as we love our lieutenants and our sergeants, we were talking about patrolmen who were in the community, doing the traffic enforcement that our residents want, I think the focus needs to be on those frontline DPW employees, that are doing the core services that our residents expect, demand, and want to see done, they're manning the catch basins, they're doing the street sweepings, I mean, the amount of stuff that we're asking them to do and pile onto them is too much, and I think we've seen a breaking point over the last year.
I agree and disagree, so what I'm going to say is, I don't want town administration to look at the forest floor and not look at the canopy, I want you to look at the organization, see what's needed in the long term, and make investments, I think we are critically low on getting, you know, the, what we consider routine tasks done, but I don't want to see, if we're going to ask anybody to start looking at organizations, I want them to look at the forest floor and the canopy, and every branch in between, because if we're going to ask people for more money in their taxes, we, I want the town manager, whoever that may be at the time, the CFO, the DPW director, Mrs. Coyle's never leaving, we know that, she's going to be buried in the basement, we've got a crypt already, Adam, we don't know about you, you might want to be buried in the basement, I don't know, but, you know, we need to make sure that we're making, we're doing a 360, because we need to be planning for the future, we are, we have been asking them to do more, there are more needs than any of us know, so yeah, it's great that the street is swept, but if the building's falling down around the employee's ears, that doesn't help me, so we, that's my only comment, is I want them to be doing a 360, making good recommendations based on, you know, just like we heard tonight, every question we had, with a few, that, you know, we want more information, the town manager gave us excellent answers, the staff gave us excellent answers, town meeting's going to want even more answers, so you're going to be glad that we were nice tonight, because we're asking for a lot of money, and people are not seeing it in their wallets, but we also have to be good stewards of everything that we have, and we're going to try and do that, while not necessarily getting a flat budget, but as close as we can, while delivering the services in the most cost-effective way.
Okay, thank you, I think that we need to remember that our schools I think that we need to remember that our schools need to be properly funded so that they can succeed, and they've, they're certainly facing challenges and rising costs, but we need to be able to support them. And I agree with my fellow board members about the DPW. I mean, I think we're trying to repair roads in 2025 with 2020 money. I mean, we don't, we need to take a hard look at the costs to, that it takes to repair these roads, all right? I think they've risen dramatically, and we need to take a look at that. And I think we should take a look at how we're allocating free cash, how our financial policy set that up. Maybe it's time to change the way, maybe it's time to change that percentage that we're doing, to provide more money for DPW.
Another thing that I forgot to mention is, I know we talked about it when Karen was here before, but I think we need to revisit our CIP trust fund. Again, while we have some available slack potentially in the budget, we may, it reached its zenith 20 years ago. To your point, the, all of these costs are going up. So, it makes sense to not just think about stabilization, not just think about OPEB, but think about adding money on an annual basis, so that when things get hairy and we can't appropriate money and we can't ask the taxpayers, we have reserves in there that we can keep up with our capital. To the, you know, nothing's perfect, but at least we, we're preparing for the future. I think that's a policy that needs to be revisited, because, I mean, I think Ed was in his 40s when that reached its zenith, and he's a little older now, so I think it's time for some, a little more money in that, as we have the opportunity to do it.
Thank you very much. That's very good. And I, it's interesting, as you guys, each of you are talking, I agree with all of you, and I feel like we're all, and I, I think even the people here, we're all sort of on the same page. We do understand where, where falling short. We also appreciate you recognizing that, you know, we work really hard, but it's, you know, we have to look at sustainability and the timing it's taking for things to get done and appropriating staff to do special things. Once I learned about that, like, a couple months ago, I was shocked, and I'm like, well, that's why some things aren't getting done. So, I'll definitely work with the DPW director, we've talked about it several times, and we'll bring a nice budget to you with these priorities in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one other one, I'm sorry.
Are you really sorry?
I, I'm a little sorry, but I'm not really that sorry. Auburn Youth and Family Services, I've asked every single year, the only two years I've been here, if we were giving them enough money, what came out through the town, through the warrant article process for, they unfortunately did not get enough signatures, is that in fact, we have not been giving them enough money. The amount of money that we're allocating is not actually as much as they're spending providing the services to the town. So, I'd like us to take a, a look at that and work with them to see if there is a way for us to actually pay the fair amount that we're actually utilizing in services from them.
Thank you for, through the chair, thank you for bringing that up. It is true. I was notified about a month or two ago that AYFS provides services to the school department, but only paid a portion of them. So, they tried to get a warrant article, and they missed the number of signatures. I've done outreach to Sally and also the chair, sorry, I forgot his name. And we are going to meet and talk about the shortfall, because we do have opportunities with our opioid funds. A lot of the work that's being done in our schools is to, for prevention and support of the children and their families. So, I've done some research with that on the state level. I can't go back, but I can go forward, so I am working with them on that. So, thank you for bringing that up.
We have, we have adjusted the money.
Yes.
We have adjusted money. Keep in mind, the money's, most of that money is youth commission grant funds, so we're not doing more for our kids as a group. We have for years taken whatever the youth commission has been allotted and turned that over to youth and family. So, you know, that's another area that I think we need to look at, is how we can, and if the schools need more resources for counseling, then we should be looking at doing that, because it's a heck of a lot easier for the kids to get pulled out of a class to have counseling. It would be great that some of the, you know, professionals that are already working in our schools could put on some of these programs, but, you know, if it's, we've never been able to give them, they've always provided more services. And whatever we find for them, I will tell you next year, they will tell us that the need is still beyond what they're getting, because the need seemingly is bottomless. So, I think, you know, the school department knows its business, I'm certainly not advising them on anything, but if there's, you know, behavioral health, if we can prevent a tragedy from happening, whether, you know, in someone's private home, or God forbid, in one of our public buildings, you know, we need to really think about that. I mean, we see how bad off these kids are, and it's, it's astonishing to me. I mean, I went through all the public schools, and it never occurred to me, you know, that how this generation of kids have so many unmet mental health needs. So, I mean, I think the school committee can advocate for itself, but I'm willing to listen to ad positions, because I think it's easier for students to be, and the school is a safe place for them, hopefully, so that they can get services during the school day, and it's not an additional, you know, lift that they have to do in their day.
Thank you. Okay. So, looking at the next item, we have information and communication regarding our town manager's goals and objectives for fiscal year 2026, with a possible board vote.
Thank you. Through the chair, I have been, I have reviewed the goals and objectives that were provided to me back in July, and I'm confident that I will be able to fulfill those goals. I did have, there's two goals that are like. One is plan of action for planning business development and growth, and the other is economic development plan and how to support boards. I do see those as very common, they have commonalities, and I'm not sure, I've spoken to my new assistant town manager, and I, although I want to build on a, an additional plan, I also want to work within the plans that we have and execute some of the things, the low-hanging fruit per se, that are on the current plans we have, working with the existing staff that we have that have some expertise. So, that's the only change that I would recommend, is that it may not be a written plan by the end of the fiscal year, but I'll know a lot more at the end of the fiscal year if there's a plan needed.
I'm not sure if I was responsible for number two or number three. I know one of those was mine. It is not my intent for us to do another plan that sits on the shelf. My goal in mentioning a plan of action or an economic development plan was for our staff to take all of the great plans that we have and implement them, and work with bringing in developers, and work with identifying 40B parcels, and bringing, and going out and actively getting those developers to the table to talk about those parcels, rather than buying a parcel in the middle of a neighborhood that doesn't want a 40B development. Or looking at bringing in other types of businesses, so we have new growth, so we can reduce the, the impact on our current taxpayers. It was not, when I spoke of a plan of action, it was not to do another plan, it was to actually, you know, take action and implement something.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. And our next item is the, we have the EO HLC certification for safe harbor for the town of Auburn, and this is very good news.
Adam, chair, did you want us to vote on any of these?
No. Do we need to?
I think we need to take a, I believe we have to take a vote.
Okay. Then I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
But I don't know if, well.
I think we have to.
The vote was to approve or not approve town manager goals.
Oh. I mean, it's probably best if we approve them.
Clear direction.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the town manager goals and objectives for FY '26.
I would just, because it is now September, I would rather not have goals for the first year, because it's, we're, we're already a quarter through it. If the town manager wants to work on these things, and she has some direction from us, I would just assume, unless, as we negotiate the new evaluation, goals were specifically excluded from the score, because prior boards would give the manager a five-year project and then want to grade them every year, which makes no sense. So, I would just ask that we, she's identified what she can work on, let's let it, let's let her do that, and then in year two, we can sit down with her and, and set some goals.
Well, I guess I would defer to the town manager. Do you want to vote, so you have something formal, or are you good to go? I think we're going to defer to you.
Honestly, I'm good to go. I've been working on all of them anyway, so, thank you.
I have more, if you want me to add more.
I have more, too.
But I, I heard that two of them were very similar, so you've got a lot more time on your hands.
All right. So, our next item is from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, and it's good news.
It is good news. So, we just received a letter from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities that put us in safe harbor. And the reason we are in safe harbor is our planner had applied to the EO HLC and provided them documentation about what the town has been doing as it relates to affordable housing. And with the influx, we fell within this specific part of the law that allows us a temporary safe harbor. So, they have announced it from July 21st, 2025, to July 20th, 2026, that we are in safe harbor status. But you have to know that if anything drops off, then that could be reduced, and that's definitely a possibility. And also, just so you know, in regards to outreach, I did outreach to Michael Busby from Mass Housing to see if he was going to continue to go through with Athens Street site visit, not Athens, Wallace Street site visit. He hasn't gotten back to me yet. And I've also notified all the residents from Athens, Athens and Wallace Street, so that they have an understanding of what's going on. They had a lot of questions, so I was able to answer them with the expertise of my staff. So, we're hoping that we have this reprieve, and, well, it looks like we have this reprieve. And in the meantime, I've been speaking with my planner and also my assistant town manager about trying to make more of a concerted effort to find properties that we would welcome 40B housing on. I know it's a short timeframe, we're well aware of that, but when I said we have other priorities, that is a priority of mine, because I, you know, the continued penetration into our neighborhoods is just not something that I'm happy with, and I know they're extremely unhappy, and I don't blame them. So, we are going to do all we can to try to work within the plans we have, identify properties, see what we can offer, and get some, some affordable housing in places that's a little bit more acceptable.
Thank you. So, you had a public meeting with residents at Wallace Ave and Athens Street? Had them, how did you do that?
I sent them all, I have emails of all of them, so it's easy to communicate with them.
Great. So, you sent the emails?
Yeah.
So, can we, so what does that mean, then, for the Wallace Ave project? Can you just explain?
I can explain it as best as I can, and Adam can jump in if I'm incorrect, but the state still has the ability to issue an LEP, and they've already, they're doing a site visit, I think, next week. They could continue to do that, or they could wait. I'm assuming they're going to continue to do that, and once they're issued this, then that's good for three years. So, there's no reason for them not to have it, unless the developer wants them to wait. I'm not sure he's going to do that, so. But for three years, and we only have a two-year, you know, so in two years, there's a very good chance these will all start back up.
What does it look like for the ZBA, I guess?
No.
What does it look like for the ZBA? So, they get, they get the eligibility letter, they file. What, what is, what is the, does the ZBA have to hold a hearing, advertise and all that good stuff?
We, we've already informed both developers that we received the certification, so they can still apply, if they get the, the eligibility letter, they can, can still apply to the ZBA for a comprehensive permit, but ZBA can deny based on this letter, if the letter's still good, for one to two years, depending on the situation, if they fall off, if the units fall off after a year, then it's only for, good for a year if they don't fall off. So, it, it's a little variable, but, um, yes, they can still apply, and, you know, we just didn't think it was fair to the developer not to alert them, because it does cost them money and all that to go through the process.
But we were clear with the butter, is that this is a temporary reprieve.
They are well aware, yes.
This may be, or they still may get a notice if a developer wants to be, and, you know, they may or may not, but ultimately, the ZBA can entertain that, correct? Any of those projects, despite the fact that we have safe harbor.
Correct.
So, my understanding is that they, if the developer files, they still, the ZBA is still forced to go through the 40B process. They can now, though, deny based on local precedence, take, outweighing regional preferences. But, in my experience and in my understanding and looking at everything, it's more likely that they're going to get their approval from the state and then wait for this to expire. So, it'd be good for us to do our due diligence and try to find some 40B projects that are more palatable and advance those, so hopefully, we can keep making progress towards our 10%, and not just sort of sit back for two years and then get hit in the head.
Right.
And is that something that the town would work with a property owner to, or to seek? Developers who are interested in developing 40Bs, is that a thing?
Yes, absolutely. Once we can determine which properties are most conducive for this type of thing, we can absolutely seek out developers and attorneys that work with developers and real estate agents, and we can work with all of them to see if we can try to get, you know, obviously, like, a mixed use would be perfect, if you have retail on the bottom and housing on the top. Those are very popular right now still, so that's the type of thing I would look forward.
My last, my last comment is, we have some sizable parcels, if they become available. I would like to see town administration pursue purchasing these parcels. Athens Street is an ideal location for trails. Beautiful piece of property, would be perfect. Wallace Ave, you know, if we could get the water district to buy it, that would be great. But, you know, if we have some of these properties in town that might be suitable for recreation, I think Athens Street truly would be a value add, and it would be a great thing for us as we are trying to get these developers, as well as existing residents, who, at least in the meetings that I've been through, through the various planning processes, they want a variety of recreation. And, you know, hiking, they don't want to have to go to, you know, Mount Minnadoch to do it. They would like to be able to, you know, I got an hour, me and the kids can go and, you know, get some exercise. But honestly, if we could do something like that, that would be ideal, just because I think it's going to pay off in the long run.
Thank you. Yes.
So, we identify these parcels, we're working with developers to potentially develop that. The 40B applicants or ones that were proposed before, if another one jumps in front of them and gets approved, is there a case for a lawsuit, or do we lose our safe harbor because they got jumped in the ZBA process?
Through the chair, I would have to look into that. I can't imagine, it, each of these developers has the right to go through the process. If they choose not to and to wait until the safe harbor's gone, so that they can use the state laws versus the town bylaws, that is up to them. If I can get a developer to come in and work with us, and go through the ZBA process and work with us, then there shouldn't be an issue.
But they'd still be looking for a lot of the same waivers that the others would, that may have got denied previously? That's, that's my concern, is that...
Well, they would be looking for the same type... It, well, they would be looking for the same type of waivers that 40B would, but they're at a parcel that the town, and I assume the butters would be much more favorable towards not opposing. It's not that we have, you know, we don't want development on Wallace, let's say, it's just that we don't want, as the neighbors have said, they're not opposed to some houses, but they don't want the big structures. If we identify parcels in the community that everyone agrees is a good place for 40B, nothing stops a developer from filing that, going through the lit process with the select board, having it be a friendly 40B, going through the ZBA process and getting approved, and we're still making gains towards our 10%. And just because those developers who are doing unfriendly 40Bs decided to wait three years, that's a decision that they're making.
I, I would challenge you to find some property that no one's going to complain about, but...
Auburn Mall.
Yeah, I mean, right.
Which would, which would actually help the mall in so many ways. Extend its life if you had housing there, and it's great from all of the planning that we've already done. I mean, you have the regional mall district, you have all the services within easy walking distance, it's a great location, and, you know, if they could do something to actually add a couple trees to, you know, cover some of the heinousness of the building, we'd all be much better off. But no, I, I think the Auburn Mall would be a perfect site, because you also tied into that's where, that's where the transportation hub is. You know, those other areas down there, you're going to have a hard time because of the, the shallowness of the lots, and, you know, you don't want to create problems with parking, you don't want to create issues for the future, but I think the Auburn Mall would be an excellent site for a large-scale, you know, development that I don't think any resident would complain about, and I don't think the retailers in the mall would complain either.
Okay, thank you. So we have tabled items, we have the September 8th, 2025 minutes. Does anyone have any questions, concerns? So we can accept those minutes, September 8th, 2025, as read or presented. And then we have the minutes for September 22nd, 2025. Does anyone have any questions or concerns? Then we can accept those, September 22nd, 2025 minutes.
We didn't get those.
Oh, we didn't get them? Oh, is it tabled? I beg your pardon. All right, so this is tabled. All right, so we have just, we have, our next meeting will be on October 14th. The next select board meeting is October 27th, and then we have the special town meeting on October 28th. Did I hear?
They will not be here on the 14th.
Okay. I, I won't either.
Okay, can I just poll the other two remaining members that will have a quorum?
I'm pretty sure I can be here.
I don't think that's what he was looking for.
No, 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 I, I'm fine to have the meeting, I think we have, we put a whole bunch of things on hold and...
I'm fine to have the meeting, it's just that I want to make sure...
Whether we have quorum, so we don't...
I would ask the members that would not be present if there's anything they want us to hold.
Don't ask that, then we can just make all the decisions.
Well, I don't know if we will.
Time to seize it.
Exactly, we have power again.
You assume I'll agree with you.
Don't worry.
Two to one votes aren't necessarily going to help him.
Just remember, Sarah, when you take votes and two of us aren't here, we can, we already have the, the fall guys, so just remember.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Second it.
All in favor, we're adjourned, thank you.